Your submission was not made before the deadline. We can't do that either. But yeah, sorry, we don't.
I can just describe what's going on then, okay?
Yeah, I mean, you could feel free to describe, but like I said, we don't have the capacity for you to turn your video camera on and we don't have the capacity to show any materials that were submitted after the deadline. Okay?
That's okay.
So I'm gonna put you back, I'm gonna put you back on mute. And um, and you'll be called when you're, when it's time for your item, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah. Hi, Corinne. Corinne? Corinne? Hi, Agostino. Hi. Agost- Agostino, I'm gonna mute and unmute you, okay? Just refrain from muting and unmuting yourself. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, you're, you're a little bit muted though, so if you're speaking to a computer, can you just speak closer to the computer?
Is this better?
Uh, it's a little bit better, yeah.
Is there a phone number by any chance to dial in from or is that?
There is, so the email that you received yesterday with instructions on how to connect had um, instructions on how to connect via telephone as well. So if you can refer to that email, you can dial in. It has all the connectivity information on there.
I see it here, thank you. I'm gonna try that.
Okay, I mean, you're, you're bet- it's better now, so I mean, it's up to you, but the information's there. I'm gonna put you on mute, okay?
Thank you.
Hi, Corinne. Corinne? Hi, Jason.
Yeah?
Hi, um.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Um, just a point of clarification, um, I'm noting on my list that both you and Corinne reside in the same address. Um, so if-
Yeah, I heard you earlier, yeah.
Okay, okay. Alright, okay, thanks.
Did she answer? Cause I heard you calling her, but I know she's, she was trying to log in, I'm not sure.
She, so it says she was logged in, um, but she didn't answer.
Yeah, she's putting my son down for a nap right now.
Okay, not a, not a problem.
That's why.
I'm gonna I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you back on mute then, Jason, and then, um, I'm gonna continue, okay, thank you. Hi, call-in user ten with the phone number four one six four one seven. Call-in user, hi.
Hi.
Can I just get your first and last name?
It's Agostino Montalioni.
Oh, it's Agostino, okay. So are you gonna use this connection or your computer connection?
I would prefer to use this, please.
Okay, not a problem. I'm gonna put you back on mute, okay?
Thank you.
Hi, Tracy.
Yes, hi.
Hi, I'm just doing a quick sound check, um, just to confirm you're speaking to item twenty eighteen Hearn Hill, correct?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna put you back on mute, okay?
Alrighty.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we're ready to start. There are some missing people. We're going to try to get ahold of them for item fourteen. Sixteen.
Hi, Catherine.
Hello.
Hi, I'm just doing a quick sound check, uh, just to confirm you're speaking to item fourteen A, B, and C, seventy-five thirty-eighth Street, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna put you back on mute, okay?
Thank you.
So we can start now with?
Good afternoon. During the declared emergency in the city of Toronto, Committee of Adjustment virtual public hearings are being conducted by electronic means through Webex, an online digital platform, and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements and a provincial order that limits attendance at public gatherings. This will be a virtual public hearing. Participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using Webex, an online event that is being moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may do so by watching on YouTube. Participants who have registered in advance will be conduct, connecting either by their computer, a phone or tablet app, or by telephone. All participants will automatically be muted on entry and when your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Only the committee members will be participating by video. Uh, at the Tobico York, we have one, uh, member participating by video, Laura Alderson, and in person, we have, on my left, uh, Mr. Neil Palmer, on my right stand, Kamaric, and I'm Michael Clark, and I'm, uh, your chair here today. So we ask that you mute your devices until you're called on to speak. Land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, Hadnashoni, and Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto was covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the credit. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act, nineteen ninety is amended. This meeting of the Committee of Adjustment, the city of Toronto, is now called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to the property, permissions to extend or alter lawful, non-conforming uses, and consents to sever properties to create new lots. Anyone who wishes to receive a copy of the decision, of the copy of the decision of the committee on an application must submit a written request for the decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and your email address, because Committee of Adjustment and the T-Lab, in the event of an appeal, will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you don't agree with the decision of the committee, decisions may be appealed to the local, Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the local, uh, Planning Appeal Tribunal or L-PAT. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. The hearing proceeds as follows. We will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. We don't vet the agenda in the virtual world, we just, uh, start off, we'll be starting at item number thirteen on the agenda and going through to item number twenty this afternoon. And where an application is uncontested, the agent or application will proceed with a presentation only if required. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into the committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. And Mr. Kamaric, who's watching the clock, will comment when you're reaching the five-minute, uh, mark, which, which time I'll ask you to, uh, uh, finish up and sum up your remarks. When addressing the committee, please start off by clearly stating your name and address for the record, and please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. We deal with planning matters. We don't deal with building code or construction issues or with personal issues between neighbors. The applicant or agent goes first, makes a presentation to the committee of the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if it's being substantially revised in order to ensure that the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the app, application are, uh, informed of the changes. Then individuals, either in support or in opposition, usually in opposition, will be invited to speak and make submissions. Again, uh, each speaker will be given a maximum of five minutes, and in the case where you have a lot of speakers, uh, we may, and we'll discuss that when we hear the matter, uh, perhaps give the most directly affected neighbors five minutes, but other speakers who wish to weigh in, uh, a little bit less time. When all speakers are finished, the agent or applicant has an opportunity to rebut only those issues raised by the speakers. Again, five minutes, but if there's been ten speakers in opposition, I could well use my discretion, if necessary, to allow the applicant more time to respond to all the concerns that have been raised. Okay, um, does anyone, either staff or, uh, committee members, have any declarations of interest uh, for the items in the afternoon time slot? No? Okay, and, um, we'll deal with referral requests, if any, as we go through the, uh, the applications. So, the first application we're gonna hear this afternoon is item number thirteen, A, B, and C. It's an application to obtain consent to sever the property into two undersized residential lots, and on each of those lots to demolish the, uh, existing dwelling on the property and to redevelop it as a site of two new detached dwellings with attached garages resulting in uh, variances to the bylaw, which are shown in Applications Parts B and C. So we have a consent and then applications for variances. I believe we have about eleven variances on each of the two variance applications, um, for these undersized lots. Uh, we have the Planning Department recommending refusal. We have Urban Forestry requesting Conditions Two and Three. We have sixteen Jellico, um, opposed, and I believe they're next door, notwithstanding the change in the difference between twenty-two and sixteen, but we'll hear about that, uh, and they oppose the side yard setback variances. Uh, in addition to that, we have copies of the site-specific zoning bylaw, covering letter, supporting material, day-to-day, August the eighteenth. We have the planning memos and we have opposition. We also have registered speakers, so we have the, uh, applicant agent, Armando Barbini, and we have one registered speaker from nineteen Jellico, which, uh, looks like it's probably across the street. Mr. Barbini, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good.
Okay, Mr. Barbini, so I've summarized what we have before us. I guess you're aware of the reports. So please, if you can give us a, uh, a presentation, especially in light of the planning, uh, memo, uh, dated May twenty-ninth, that, uh, uh, recommends that this application be refused.
Sure. Um, well, as outlined, this application is to divide the property into two equal-sized lots, seven-point-six-two meters, and construct a detached dwelling. I provided for the committee the, on February the seventh, a detailed planning rationale, where I concluded that the, um, the, the proposal complies with the test set out in the Planning Act, both respective, uh, Section fifty-one for consents and Section, um, forty-five for minor variances. I, I'd actually prefer to have on the screen the supplemental information dated August seventeenth. Yeah, that's, that's it, and, uh, I, I'll take the committee through this to explain why I feel this proposal does have merit and meets those tests. So the first exhibit there, you'll see, uh, this is actually the appendix, it's very similar, but if, uh, if I could ask that the other, um, document be put up, which is dated August seventeenth, I think it shows, uh, more of what I'm looking to demonstrate, yes. So if you scroll down to the first exhibit, which is, um, it's the same map you just saw, it's a study area, and I chose that study area both broader context and immediate context to do a lot size analysis. And if you look at the next page, you'll see there are three charts, and they, they indicate what the frequency of lot sizes are within certain ranges. And it's going to, you'll note that both under the broader context, as well as the immediate context, uh, the, either the prevailing lot size or the frequently occurring lot size is lots that are seven-point-six-two meters or less. So what's being proposed is very consistent with what's in the area. You'll see that there's a wide range of lot sizes from that smallest category all the way up to, uh, fifteen-point-two-four, which is what is the, under the current application, or the current lot. But you'll see that there's not very many of the larger lots, there's more of the medium-sized lots or the smaller lots. If you go, scroll down to the next, uh, item, you'll see a series of photographs, and these photographs are all seven-point-six-two meters lots in this area that have had their lots severed into twenty-five-foot lots and, um, have had similar variances granted. You'll see that most of the side yard setbacks are point-six and point-nine. So what happens is on the interior, it's a point-six, and on the exterior is point-nine. But the, an exterior setback of point-nine meters is very consistent with all of these homes, and these homes are either on the property, there's, uh, on the street, there's, uh, number thirty, uh, was approved. There's, uh, the streets to the north and to the south have also had, uh, variances approved, very similar to what's being proposed. And if you go down to street, uh, number five, the next one, or the, the following one, this one is just a detailed list of all of the variances that were granted for each of those corresponding photographs. So I'm hoping the committee had a chance to look through it. I don't wanna necessarily go through them, but you'll see, as you scroll down, they're very similar to what's being proposed under the current application. But if you go to the next exhibit, number five, it's a series of photographs and a streetscape map of the existing north side of the street. So you'll see in the far-left-hand side, which is a number thirty and thirty-two Jellico, it's virtually the identical, um, homes that are being proposed under the current application. Next to that, there's a pair of semis. Next to that, there's two more pairs of semis. Then there's the subject property, which is a, a bungalow, detached bungalow, then you'll have another detached home, another detached home, a duplex, and, uh, another fairly large, newer detached home. And if you go to the last one, what I've done is, uh, um, I superimposed the plan of the front elevation to show approximately what it would look like. It's not a hundred percent accurate, but it, it pretty well, uh, represents the, the size of the home compared to the neighboring homes. If you look at number thirty and thirty-two, it basically is around the same size and height as being proposed there. So, given that this proposal would result in two lots that are very much in keeping with the predominant lot sizes in the area, the variances that are being requested are also very consistent with what's in the area, I submit that this proposal does meet the test set out in the Planning Act, um, for both consent and minor variance.
Okay, Mr. Barbini, just one quick question before I see if other committee members, the lot, what, the thirty and thirty-two Jellico, were those also, those was originally one lot that was severed and built as?
Yes, actually, yeah, if you go back up to, um, Exhibit Four.
Yeah.
Um, there's a, there's a line item there for number thirty, so, uh, too far, we'll scroll down a bit. Right there, a number, item, photograph number twelve, or C thirty and thirty-two.
Yep.
Yeah.
Forty-two percent. Point-eight.
Yeah.
Point-seven-one.
And if you look at some of these, some of these, they've had eighty-one, point-eight-one times density approved. Um, so there's a range, uh, the range of density is from point-five-nine to point-eight-one, and this one i- is, uh, uh, bit, uh, the high side, but it's still point-seven-seven, within the range of what's being proposed, and the density, the coverage is actually lower, it's only thirty-eight percent, uh, which is still in excess, but it's within the range of what's being approved in the area.
Okay, and something else that Planning had brought up, and I think we've had this on a few applications, uh, you had a couple of weeks ago, where the built form, as opposed to being semis, is a pair of singles. Why are, why do you feel that uh, singles, uh, detached, uh, as opposed to a semi-detached, uh, what, uh, Planning seems to feel is more appropriate?
Okay, well, I, I, I didn't show that, uh, same exhibit that I did in the previous one, but if you scroll down to number, uh, number five, uh, right here, you'll see the homes that are between thirty and thirty-two and our subject property are all semis.
Right.
So when I say semis, those are two units, so if you actually take these two proposed detached homes and squeeze them together, I guess, for lack of a better word, push them together so that there's no gap, it actually would look more mass, more of a mass, similar to the duplex that's on the right-hand side and similar to the semis. So I submit that providing this gap in between actually provides a more of, uh, less of a visual impact from the streetscape. So the massing looks less.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Barbini. Anyone have any questions, or Mr. Barbini, before we, uh, hear from a neighbor? Okay, you'll hear and then you'll ask at that point. Okay, so, uh, we do have one red, neighbor registered to speak, uh, and that is Sylvia Scragnar at nineteen Jellico, which I assume is across the street. Hello, Sylvia?
Sixteen Jellico, which is the neighbor. Do you have another person? Yeah, do you have another person for nineteen Jellico? We're at sixteen Jellico.
We have a, I believe a letter, but they're not here registered to speak. Oh, so we have a letter from Sylvia, we have your letter. We live at sixteen, have lived here for- Oh, so you don't, you don't live at nineteen, you live at sixteen? So there was, there was a mistake on the, uh,
Correct.
My list of speakers, so you're at sixteen. Okay, so I was wondering, you're saying you're across, you're, you're, uh, next door, even though there's a big jump in numbers. Right, there isn't twenty, there isn't a twenty, uh, there isn't an eighteen. There is no eighteen or twenty Jellico, correct? So you're right next door?
We're right next door, we're at sixty-six Jellico Avenue.
Yes, okay. Okay, so let's hear what your concerns are, ma'am. Try to speak clearly and directly into the microphone so we can hear you, cause it's a little bit muffled.
Okay, uh, so we live at sixteen Jellico. Almost fifty years. And, and the new house is being built, at twenty-five, they will share a border
That's so, sorry, ma'am, we're not, we're not making out, I'm getting every second word. Are you speaking on a computer or on a phone?
Yes. I'm speaking on a computer, me now? Hello?
Yep. Okay, try again.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, uh, we're asking that the side yard setback not be reduced less than the one-point-two meters that's, uh, current, the current requirement, side yard setback for, um, the side yard setback along our border. And I just wanna make sure that my understanding of that is correct. My understanding of that is that side yard setback for the side of the house is the distance from the property line to where the house wall starts.
Yes.
So, um, okay, thank you. Uh, we have on our house five windows on that side of our home, which will be blocked by the new building. And when homes are so close together, it makes a very, very big difference if you reduce the side yard setback, even though on paper it may seem like a very small change. And we can see the photos that were just a moment ago, but that does not in any way change the fact that the new house being built will block our windows, and the closer the houses are together, the worse that is. Now, our house is also a big house, but we stayed within the one-point-two meter rule.
Yeah.
So it does not seem un, it does not seem an unreasonable request to ask that the new house being built will also follow that rule.
So, just to clarify, maybe staff and we can, Mr. Barbini, so I'm looking at variance five on part two, is that what I'm looking at? When I'm looking at the the point-nine of a meter from the east side lot line, is that the variance we're looking at that's affecting Mrs. Scragnar? At sixteen? Or is it the? So which, I wanted to see what, what's being proposed by Mr. Barbini here, is the side yard affecting, uh, yeah, so it's part two and it's the distance, so it's between the two is point-four-four, but what's proposed next year lot to, to lot line is point-nine, I don't know if you have one-point-two. That's the west, and she on the east? Looking at. She's on the east side, so it's the east side, uh, east side yard lot, lot line, or the east side variance of part? Well, C or B, B or C? So it's point-nine from the east lot line.
The point-four-four is the interior setback.
Yes, yes, and the other one is point-nine. And on the other side, in part C, which is the flip side, it's probably also uh, and that's also point-nine. So what they're proposing is the interior is point-four-four, and on both sides, both next to sixteen, and if it's twenty-four or whatever number it is on the other side, on the outside lots, the extraneous, it's point-nine, whereas one-point-two, so it's point, the variance is point-three of a meter, or like a foot. So they're a foot closer to their lot line than they're supposed to be. And you're asking that they give back that foot, correct?
Uh, yes, um, our house is also a large house, um, but we stayed within that one-point-two meter rule. Um, so it seems reasonable to ask that the new house follow that rule as well?
Yes, so Ms., would you, was your house built, uh, new and? You're saying that-
Our house. Sorry?
Yes, was your house just recently built, or it's always been one-point-two, or it was just put there recently?
Uh, it wasn't recently, um, the house, uh, was built by, um, our parents. Um, it's three of us here, uh, my Sylvia is my sister, I'm Antonia, her sister, and our mother, uh, also Sylvia, and, um, our parents built this house about fifty years ago.
Okay, so you're giving, you, you have a one-point-two, uh, meter side yard, you'd like the neighbor to give you the same one-point-two se, meter side yard, otherwise you're okay with the application? You have any other concerns, heights, massing?
Um, the, the, the main thing is, um, like, we understand the, the, you know, the, the desire for a large house, um, so, you know, we're not saying anything about any of the rest of it, the height, the whatever else. Um, just the, um, uh, just the, the side yard setback, um, I think it would benefit both of us, like, both properties.
Yep.
To have a reasonable side yard setback, and, um, and, and also, when, when they, when they build it, the grade of it, you know, so that the water runs
Yeah, so you feel that having one-point-two on each side for a two-point-four spatial separation between the houses is, uh, appropriate, and that's what you'd like to see done? And otherwise, you don't have a problem with being two singles versus a semi, or the height, or anything else, you're okay with everything else?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Let's go back to Mr. Barbini and, uh, see what he has to say about that. And then we'll see, we'll bring him into committee for questions and a decision.
Yeah, okay, um, I, I understand, I can appreciate the concern from the neighbor, um, especially when you're used to living beside a bungalow for quite a number of years, ever since the ho, the house was built, that bungalow that's on the subject property has always been there. Uh, so any new construction, even if it complied with the bylaw at one-point-two meters and the length, you know, of seventeen, would create some impacts. I mean, I think the committee can understand that, and I think, I'm hoping the neighbor can understand that, so uh, I guess, that is understandable. The additional foot would make it, um, a lot more difficult to for the owner to, um, obtain the interior layout that he requires. Otherwise, we wouldn't be requesting the additional side yard, and we, and I get it, I have to reiterate that it is consistent with many of the approvals in the area, the point-nine meters, we're not, we're not going further than what's being requested on the, on the exterior to the neighbors. So I, and so, so I, I can say that some of those windows, I, I took a look, um, I believe, and then, you know, and, and they are gonna be blocked, I mean, not blocked, but somewhat blocked, but the difference is whether that additional foot is gonna make a, an adverse impact, and I don't, I, I would submit that the additional foot, number one, is in keeping with what's being approved in the area, and it's also not going to adversely impact the neighbor more than, I guess, and as of right construction. Uh, when I looked at the windows, I think three of them are in the basement, if I'm not mistaken, there are two windows, one on the ground floor and one on the second floor. Um, so there are going to be some windows, but again, like I said, the additional foot, I don't believe would create any additional adverse impact.
Okay, um, I have a question, again, relating to, I think Mr. Palmer has. So my only comment to that, Mr. Barbini, is you do have eleven variances on either, on each of the two, uh, consent, uh, variance applications. And also, if you haven't heard, I'd just like to get some discussion about why you, the second-floor platform, and I believe that's at the rear, or is it the front? Or is it the front? Uh, is oversized, four meters, four square meters to seven, almost double size. And if it's off a bedroom or a common room.
Yeah.
Those are my two questions.
Okay, well, the um, the, when you look at the floor plan, yes, the, it is off a bedroom, so it's not really for um, for any party activity or any family activity, other than, you know, sitting out there having a coffee in the morning. Um, it's not really excessively large. Um, it looks, uh, you know, it's almost double, but four square meters is, is uh, is not very big, right? So they're, they're, they wanna put a little table there and have the ability to um, to sit there and have a coffee or a drink in the mornings when they wake up. Now, there could be, uh, and I think there is a screen proposed, if I'm not mistaken, um, along that side. I'm just gonna pull up the plan, I know you have it there. If you can zoom in on the give me one second. Yeah, a privacy screen proposed on both sides of that, of that balcony.
Yep.
So, you know, um, that could, then typically, I mean, the details may not be shown, I'm just taking a quick look. But I know that this owner who's built other homes would usually put some frosted glass with uh, I think that's the way it's shown on the plan too. Some frosted glass. Oh no, he showed it as wood. My mistake, that was the front I was looking at. Um, uh, but it, it is a privacy screen, so it's not going to be, affect the neighbor's privacy. Um, and it's not going to be an area where there's gonna be a lot of activity.
So the size is more a function of the, you want it to go right across or, you know?
Yeah, and being able to put a chair, I mean, and, and that could be reduced. I don't think that he's married to that size, but you know, um.
But it is off a bedroom, the master bedroom, correct?
Yeah, it is off the master bedroom, yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, questions for either the neighbor or for Mr. Barbini, Mr. Palmer?
Um, yeah, Mr. Barbini, I believe you were before us a couple of weeks ago for another application. And we talked about the uh, setback of, on that application, it was point four meters, and this one here, it's point four four. Um, and I think that's entirely too small. I don't think it's very functional. And unless you had an easement uh, that you were able to put in place, and I think we can't do that in this case. Um, and in the comparison chart that you gave us of all the other developments and you listed the side back, uh, side yard setbacks, they were point six and point nine. And I don't believe there was any case where it was less than point six. So I think you've presented us evidence that that variance shouldn't be less than point six, correct?
I understand, and you know, and, and I do recall the conversation, of course, because it was only two weeks ago, but by that time and I did talk to this owner, because this is a different owner, right? And I did talk to this owner and I alerted him, and uh, by that time though, the notice had already gone out. So we couldn't necessarily change it and um, and I do understand, and if that's what the committee's decision is, we can live with it. The extra point six meters. There is, there was one that was approved, I believe it was point five. Um, point five and point five one, I, it was number thirteen and fourteen on that chart, but uh, yes, you're right. Most of the other ones were all point six on, on the interior and point nine on the exterior.
Okay, no further questions.
Okay, any other further questions for Mr. Barbini or for the neighbor, or uh, we ready to take this matter into committee?
I think um, based on what we've just discussed with regards to the interior setbacks. And I'm tending to agree with planning's recommendation that two semis will be more appropriate here. Um, you would wind up with fewer variances. You've got an excessive amount of variances here at eleven. And therefore, I don't believe this is minor and I'm going to move that the application be refused.
Thank you, Mr. Kamarick. We have a second here for that motion.
Uh, I just want clarification on that. Is that all of the applications?
Yep.
Whole thing.
So you feel that, I guess-
Sorry, that includes the consent? Sorry, I was on mute. That includes the consent.
Correct.
Okay. I think I would, I think I would support that as, I'll second that motion, yes.
Okay, so uh, we have a motion to refuse, a second are all in favor? Okay, the matter has been refused. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barbini. Thank you, Ms. uh, Scragnar, and uh, we'll move on to the next application.
Thank you.
Okay, item number fourteen, seventy-five thirty-eighth street. This is our uh, probably largest application of the afternoon in terms of number of participants. Uh, seventy-five thirty-eighth street, it's an application, uh, similar last one to obtain consent to uh, sever the, the lot into two undersized residential lots. And to uh, demolish the existing property and redevelop uh, each of the two sites as the site of a new detached dwelling with attached garage. Were guard, resulting in variances to the bylaws set out in applications B and C. And we have a planning report for information. They seem to be okay with the application. Uh, urban forestry three. Uh, we have a letter from the counselor that there's a lot of opposition and feels that it's undersized. And within we have a lot of support and a lot of opposition as well. And we have registered to speak, uh, quite a number, three, uh, in addition to the applicant, it looks like we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight people registered. Um,
Sorry, Mr. Chair, just a point of clarification on the registered speakers. Um, staff did reach out to David Godley and David Godley confirmed that he will not be joining us.
Okay. So we have a number of concerned neighbors and then we have uh, some people from the uh, Long Branch Neighborhood Association. And we typically uh, have two speakers from that organization. Uh, one dealing with the trees and one dealing with the actual application. It's usually Judy Gibson and Christine Mercado. So let's see how that uh, how that proceeds. So I guess we'll start off by hearing, getting a presentation from Reza Dadashi. Cultivate Group, the agent. Mr. Dadashi, are you with us?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Good grave. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. My name is Reza Dadashi, I'm the agent on this file, here to get your support on the development of two single family homes.
Yeah, can you try to, just before you get started, sir, before you get started, can you try to speak slowly and clearly? Enunciate your words and try to speak a little bit, project a little bit louder. Cause we sit here all day and we have strain to listen. It's better if we can hear you clearly. Without making a big effort.
Okay, that sounds great.
Thank you.
That sounds bad.
We've got a single change to the number of variances. So if you, um, we are eliminating variance number three on both applications, both minor variance applications. Um, pertaining to the exterior wall height.
I, I think you look, I have the uh, number three being the maximum floor space index, which I don't think you're gonna change that. Are you going by the zoning notice or the uh, or the committee of adjustment notice?
Uh, the zoning waiver, but-
Yeah, you have to use our variance list.
Okay.
So I assume you need variance five. So it's variance five, front exterior main wall height?
Five?
Yeah, so it's variance number five.
Eliminating that variant.
Okay. Just wanna make sure we eliminate the right one, right?
Yep, you bet.
Okay. Okay, so we have four variances in each case, yes.
Right. The consent application before you is the division of a fifty foot lot into two twenty-five foot lots. This is not a new phenomenon to the street and I'd like to share some stats with you. If you turn to PDF page two. On our rationale, our presentation material.
I was like, can we get that up on the screen, sir, please? Just get that up on the screen for you, while you make reference to it.
Thank you. The subject block is comprised of thirty-five residential lots. There are seventeen lots on thirty-eighth street, ten lots on thirty-seventh and eight lots on James Street. Of these thirty-five lots, twenty of them are twenty-five foot lots. And of those twenty, seventeen of them are on our street, in our block. So almost sixty percent of the lots in our block are lots with twenty-five foot frontages. Directly adjacent to the subject property in both directions are twenty-five foot lots, specifically the four lots north. And the eight lot, lots south of the subject property are uninterrupted twenty-five foot lots.
Okay.
If you turn to PDF page four. So we've worked with planning staff to ensure the side yard setbacks don't impact the neighbors on either side of the proposal by respecting the bylaw requirement of one point two meters with these neighbors. We are looking to reduce the side yard setback on the interior between these two buildings to zero point six meters.
Hold on, is that, hold on, hold on, is that a change you're making?
Yep. Nope, that's-
Oh, that's, okay, that's what we have now, right? Point six on either side for the two interior lots, one point two.
That's right.
Okay.
Exactly, that's correct. That's maintaining. And if you turn, actually on that, uh, I wanted to make a typo correction in the rationale letter, so it doesn't appear that we're being misleading. Uh, at the top there, where the mouse cursor is, just below the bullet points.
So what page is that? Is your, uh, this is your, your cover letter?
PDF page four.
Your rationale?
Yeah, so the, the first, uh, the second, the first paragraph, the second line. Uh, it's relating to the size of the home, the building area. So that number's supposed to be nineteen twenty-four square feet, not eighteen twenty-four square feet.
Okay.
But the FSI value doesn't change.
Okay, so you're saying it's-
Nineteen twenty-four square feet, yeah. It's just the title. It's supposed to be nine instead of an eight. So this is a modest sized home and I'd like to communicate that we began the design process with the homeowner, our client, with an FSI number that is logical, some that comes in well below recent approvals. And on thirty-eighth street, I'd like to draw your attention to several relevant files. At forty thirty-eighth street, this committee approved an FSI of zero point eight six. With a side yard setback of zero point eight six. Again, this was an application that had a severance of a fifty foot lot into two twenty-five foot lots. Another very similar application was a fifty-two thirty-eighth street with an FSI value of zero point six eight. Similar to the side yard setback, again, zero point six. Uh, and directly across the street from us, uh, at seventy-four thirty-eighth street, this committee approved an FSI of zero point five eight with a side yard setback at point six one. Again, it was a severance of a fifty foot lot into two twenty-five foot lots. This is very common in this neighborhood, specifically on the street. If we look further slightly west of fortieth street, this committee in February of this year, in ninety-four, ninety-five fortieth street, approved a, a severance and a FSI of zero point six eight. That was February twenty-seventh. And there are other, there are many other applications in the community that are relevant to this file. In summary, we believe this, that's similar to how Long Branch is unique to the community. In the city of Toronto, thirty-eighth street is a unique street in the community of Long Branch, populated with many twenty-five foot lots. And the proposed lots are consistent with the existing lot sizes in the immediate area and sit into the fabric of the street. There's an overwhelming number of twenty-five foot lots in the immediate vicinity, as well as in the broader Long Branch community. We've worked with planning staff in adopting many aspects of the neighborhood guidelines while meeting the needs of a modern family and affordable housing. This committee has provided relief for consent applications like this and side yard setbacks and FSI variances in excess of what we are proposing here today. And we've worked with planning staff, received their support and believe we are meeting the intent of the neighborhood guidelines on this application. We've reached out to many of our neighbors and have received thirty-five letters of support to date. The community is supportive of this application. And that these support letters represent neighbors on our street and within our, our block. Numbers eighty-nine, eighty-seven, eighty-four, seventy-six, seventy-four, seventy, sixty-nine, sixty-three. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dadashi, and I wanna just start off before we go to the neighbors. Uh, I have a couple of comments. Thank you for a very comprehensive review of that. And it, then you look at the planning report, and I just wanna make a comment here because the planning report, which concludes that we have, I just wanna get the exact wording here. Yeah, at the very end, they say of the, planning staff with the opinion of proposed consent application and associated minor variances meet the general intent and purposes of the zoning bylaw and the official plan are minor and appropriate, which is normally, which is a test we use. But when they say, give it to us for information, I, you know, I don't know why they're reluctant to give, say, support or we have no further concerns or something like that. And um, I guess we're gonna hear from the neighbors what, what that is, but it's, it's, to me, I virtually looked at it, it's the same as the saying that the, they basically say they have no concerns, but that they start off where they normally say, we recommend this be approved or refused, they just say it's for information. Um, so having said that, let's move on to the neighbors. Um, and like I said, we have twenty neighbors in opposition or twenty letters in opposition. And we have a lot of op, uh, people in support, so that's just sort of reading between the lines. Uh, community planning for some reason does not like to say in these Long Branch applications, we have no concern, they just say it's for information. And just wanna go on record that I'm confused about that. Perhaps we can find it from planning in the future what that means, or if it means anything different. Um, okay, so I guess the first speaker we have listed here is um, I guess we might as well go in order, Catherine Adams, uh, unless we go, we have the, the Long Branch people, whether they go first or second or at the end. Uh, so let's just start with Catherine Adams and please, if you can re, re, keep your remarks to, you know, it's less than uh, five minutes, uh, two minutes, three minutes. If you can get it done, that would be appreciated with so many speakers registered. So Catherine Adams, seventy thirty-seven, so I guess you're across the street.
So Mike Holland here, which is Catherine Adams' husband. Uh, we're backyard neighbors on thirty-
Sorry, can we get your name because you didn't register?
Okay, Catherine Adams is my wife.
I know, but I, you're speaking, I need your name.
Oh, Mike Holland, like the country.
Mike Holland, okay. And you, oh, so you're thirty-seventh street, sorry, so you're behind.
Yes.
Not, not across the street, you're behind.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Holland, let us, can you just let us know what your concerns are?
Um, some of the concerns already been addressed. Um, the big one, it's um, the point five six coverage is almost sixty percent over the zoning. It's a, you know, a large house for the lot, some, it sounds like. Um, and you know, is that going to then start impacting on our privacy and in the back? Um, enter sunlight and everything else.
Okay, anything else or? You think it's just too big for the lot, point five six?
And the frontage is thirty-six percent underneath the um, the zoning, oh, you know, was it forty feet and it's twenty-five feet?
Yeah.
Which again, significantly less, so. Those are my concerns.
Okay, so you would agree though, from the map we saw, that basically all of the other houses on that stretch of uh, thirty-eighth street are all sort of similar, this is the one outlier, larger lot.
Yeah.
But you figure smaller lot, smaller house.
Yeah.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Holland before we move on to the next speakers? Nope. Okay, Carrie Nickel, sixty-nine thirty-eighth street. So is that, would I be right in saying it's about three houses over, assuming there's a house every, there's a seventy-three and a seventy-one, so you're three houses over, Mr. Nickel?
Um, I'm actu, sorry, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, so I'm actually next to the immediate neighbor. Um, so I am two, one, two houses south of seventy-five, seventy-three would be the new address. I'm at sixty-nine.
Okay, so you're one house, one house removed.
Yes.
Okay, what's your concern, sir?
Uh, I'm actually uh, uh, in support of the split and build, so sorry, I don't know if that was out of order.
No, no, that's fine. It's just listed as a speaker and even though in my opening comments, I say typically the people are in opposition, but certainly people are entitled to speak in, in support. They don't normally always do that, so you are in support, you feel it fits within the, uh, as the agent explained, uh, the pattern of development. You don't think it's too large a house?
Co, correct. If you take a look at the over, overhead view of the, the entire neighborhood, um, like thirty-eighth is a very diverse street with a bunch of new builds, a lot of single level homes and a lot of renovated units. My house, for example, is a uh, nineteen thirties rebuild, um, with a, a- My house, for example, is a nineteen thirties rebuild with a second level added to the top.
Right.
And it's, it's a decent size, but rather small. A lot of the other units being built in that new are much more in line with a kind of a fuller-scale three-bedroom home. But again, in terms of the setbacks, how far the house will go back, the height, they're mostly in line with, with already existing, which is very a, a, a large mix of, of, of homes. The one comment I will make is, one of the things that I truly care about is, is the, the tree and tree canopies of the neighborhood. I do like the fact that this lot would be split and the addition of, I believe, a tree on each property. A smaller, I don't know the proper name for it, would be added to the front, which is fantastic, it really adds to the neighborhood. A couple of our neighbors that have a similar type of home near the corner of James and Thirty-Eighth, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact address, they just added a tree to theirs, and it adds so much more to the neighborhood. This property doesn't look to be cutting anything, which is fantastic. But for all in all, I do support the build of these two homes, it's within character and I believe within reason of all of the variances that have been proposed. And that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you, yeah, we do have a report from Urban Forestry and Urban Forest Condition Three. So, okay, thank you, so let's move on to the next speaker, would be Sandy Donald from Thirty-four Thirty-Sixth Street, so please include, tell us where, where that is in relation to subject property and what your concerns are of here in support.
Thirty-four Thirty-Sixth, I'm basically two streets over.
Okay.
Just a little sort of background, I'm, my name is Alexander or Sandy Donald, I'm from Thirty-four Thirty-Sixth Street. Actually, I run a media and research company. Question, actually, did you receive the submission that I sent in? And have you had a chance to read it?
Well, we'll check, we have twenty, we had twenty objection letters, but we have yours here. Yeah.
This would actually been about fifty-seven pages.
And I know, Mr., are you Mr. Godley, I know who's going to be speaking.
This is Alexander Donald.
Right.
Or Sandy Donald.
Yeah, just got to go through the twenty letters here.
Is this the one where you're basically saying that there are variances that have been missed?
Uh, no, that's not, I, I had basically five areas in mind. One was the provincial policy, the other was the official plan and intent, the intent of the bylaws, there was a photo page with it. Minor is more than impact, character guidelines, soldier houses, there was a photo page with it, and the last was precedence, bylaws and the official plan.
Members, it'll be Opposition Seventeen in your agenda packages.
Okay. Okay, so you're writing less as an immediately affected neighbor as opposed to, you know, the wider issues of the, the planning. So you feel that this is not appropriate?
That's correct. In the presentation, I sent it in from the, on, as far as my verbal comments, I'd be focusing in on the Long Branch, our Long Branch character guidelines, if you can sort of turn to that. And sort of the, sort of number comments from there. The guideline section has been ordered within the document to reflect the current, current structure of policies of official plan four point one point five, that's page five. The character guidelines is the city council defining the unique character of the Long Branch neighborhood. It goes to the council's intent of the official plan. A lot of the, or most of the stuff that I've actually presented here has actually quite literally been physically pulled out of the character guidelines.
Yeah, I know, you're just sort of like, you know, throwing us all this stuff, but you, you know, specifically dealing with this particular application, this is more of a macro-level approach to things, you would agree?
Well, it's macro, but also I, I have actually specific stuff in there. It goes the.
Yeah, the soldier homes, yeah.
Well, very definitely, the character guidelines, which I'm dealing with here, which I'm just sort of going through in order. Throughout the presentation, view and valuation of development application, it is important that the guidelines be considered in their entirety. This appears on page three and thirty-five. The, as far as lot severance goes, which I think this is actually extremely important, and it does deal it very specifically within the character guidelines. The neighborhood is characterized by moderate to wide lots, frontage ranging from nine to fifteen point two fi, two-four. Recent lot severances, which are distributed throughout the neighborhood, produce comparatively narrow lots, six to eight meters that do not meet the intent and purpose of the zoning by law. This appears on page twenty-one. As far as the building face, this is a, which I, I cover in the soldier house. Basically, this is a soldier house design, garages that are not compatible with street. I go to the front entrance, ensuring a sense of animation at street level to ensure that the integral garage do not dominate the primary front, front facade, which this is an integrated garage, which definitely does. For windows, no windows on the first floor facing the street. Habit is at the back. Gain number ten, driveways and garages.
Yeah, Mr. Donald, can you try to wrap up here at five minutes, and we have a lot of registered speakers? My comment would be, we do have the Long Branch character guidelines that we're, we'll hear from the, the association of, you're a part of, that dealing with all of your concerns, they brought about sort of, you know, we can't on every application consider on a, the level that you're presenting to us on a, that macro level. So in response to that, I believe they developed these Long Branch character guidelines, which I believe the applicant has proceeded to fill out the checklist, so we thank you for your sort of overview on that.
Okay, the, the approach the applicant had taken in regards to the character guidelines, they've taken the approach that if no variance is requested, therefore it meets the character guidelines, which is not the intent of the character guidelines. The character guidelines is defining the physical characteristic of Long Branch under the official plan four point one point five.
Okay, sir, if you can please wrap up because you're over five minutes and I'm, I'm going to have to cut you off with eight, with all these registered speakers. So we thank you for your submission, both orally and your, your written submission. And we do have people from Long Branch here to speak as well.
Okay, I, I, I am also from Long Branch area too.
Right, yeah, I understand. Are you a member of the association, are you speaking on your own behalf, not as a member, as a official, as a member of the Long Branch Association?
I, I'm speaking on my own behalf.
Yes.
Because I'm going to be directly affected to, by this.
Correct, thank you very much.
I, I would like to summarize if I could.
I'm sorry, you're, you're, you're over six minutes and we have to move on. So the next.
Okay, I'm jacked, but okay.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jamison? Is Mr. Jamison there, Mr. Jamison, you're, I believe, a member of the Long Branch, but you're speaking here on your own behalf today, correct?
That's right, because I'm a resident.
Yeah, because you're at number ten, you're on the same street.
Yes.
Okay, let us know what your concerns are, sir.
My name is Ron Jamison. Good afternoon, Mr. Clark and committee members. My name is Ron Jamison, and I live at number ten Thirty-Eighth Street, as I mentioned. I'm also a retired professional engineer. Now, for me, this hearing is not just about a single application, but its impact on my street and the broader neighborhood. In my letter of August twentieth, I described Thirty-Eighth Street as being at a tipping point. I mean, in two thousand eight, when my wife and I moved to Long Branch, Thirty-Eighth Street had a mix of fifty-foot and twenty-five-foot lots. The number of twenty-five-foot lots was the same as the number of fifty-foot lots. However, severances granted at number forty and number fifty began to shift the balance between the distribution of twenty-five versus fifty-foot lots. Now, an argument used routinely by planners or lawyers representing builders who want to sever lots is to point to other severances that have been granted, just as you heard in the previous application. In many cases, they're not even close to the subject property, and they use that as the basis for requesting approval of their application. In the case of nine Thirty-Eighth Street immediately opposite my house, the lawyers for the applicant cited approval of number forty as justification for their proposal, as well as the severance of number fifty. They cited the lack of opposition to the severance of number forty, when in fact forty percent of the lots on my block were owned by developers. So the letters notifying people about the committee of adjustment application largely went to builders, not residents. I know that the owner of number fourteen, just up the street from me, has already submitted an application to sever, and we've had other applications to sever at number fifteen across the street on this block and number thirty. In the case of number thirty, while he was granted approval to sever by the O M B, he's done nothing to the property other than cut down trees. And both of these homes, number fourteen and number thirty, have transient occupants when they're occupied.
Yes, sir, sir, can we talk about this application? In the three minutes you have left?
Okay.
I think that's a better use of your time. We have this application, I know, I realize you're telling us what's gone on on your street, but we want to know what your concerns are with this app, with this application, I appreciate the background. We know there's lots of development, and I appreciate that you're saying if the notice letters went to lots that are owned by developers, that's why they're not here complaining.
That's, that's right.
I really appreciate it, I understand that, but let's hear about this particular application that's before us and, you know, that all the other lots on the street are already been, either are twenty-five or have been reduced to twenty-five.
Okay. Now, the applicant has argued that his proposal addresses the need for more affordable housing. Now, the truth is that homes built as a result of severance in Long Branch run the market in the range of one to five to one point seven million. And such homes require a first-time homebuyer to have a household income of two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars to carry. In a city with an average household income of a hundred and two thousand, these prices can hardly be considered as offering affordable homes to young families. Both the lot frontage and density on this application fall outside what is prevailing in Long Branch, especially in the area that I studied between Fortieth and Thirty-Sixth Street, two streets either side of Thirty-Eighth. Exhibit three of the letter that I sent in shows that the applicant is correct in observing that the prevailing frontage on the block is twenty-five feet. However, they failed to point out that on my block immediately south, it's the mirror image of the, of the distribution on the block north. Prevailing here is fifty feet, and they also admitted mentioning that the entire length of Thirty-Eighth Street has almost identical numbers of fifty and twenty-five-foot lots. They also failed to mention that the prevailing frontage in the area that I studied was fifty feet by considerable margin, and I showed that in exhibit one. I also did a similar analysis on the FSIs on the neighborhood and the street, and the prevailing FSI in the neighborhood is in the range of point two to point two-nine. Now, to three hundred forty-seven residential properties in the neighborhood I studied, only fourteen had densities in excess of zero point five. On my block, the prevailing density is between zero point one and zero point nine, and reflects small homes and fifty-foot lots. Even on the block between James and Lakeshore, the prevailing density is in the range of zero point two to, zero point two-nine. So on the block, on the street and across the neighborhood, the majority of homes fall well within the parameters of the bylaw, i.e. point three-five. I would ask you to refuse this application on the grounds that by falling outside what is prevailing in density, frontage and lot size, it fails to meet the bylaw in the intent of policy four point one point five B and C of the official plan. Approval of this application will result in an irreversible trend towards smaller lots on this street with potential impacts on adjacent streets in western Long Branch. The property is situated in an area designated as neighborhood, where intensification is not considered appropriate. And lastly, it does not represent an increase in the availability of affordable homes for young families. Now, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Jamison. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Jamison at this time, before we move on to the next speaker? Okay, so we have, now we have the speakers for the Long Branch, Judy Gibson and Christine Mercado, I don't know who wants to go first. One talking about trees, one talking about what everyone else has been talking about. Okay, Judy Gibson?
Yes, I would actually, there's a next-door neighbor that hasn't been heard from, and he's here waiting on the line, and he's not been able to speak yet.
Okay, that's, he's, because he's last on list, is that Mr. Mukherjee?
Yes, correct.
Yes, it's seventy-one. Okay, if you prefer, we can hear from him first.
Please.
Okay. Mr. Mukherjee? Okay, we'll get him on the phone.
Mr. Chair, and thanks Judy, my name's Gotham Mukherjee, and as mentioned, myself and my family, two, two young children, wife and mother-in-law, actually all live right next door to the south.
Right.
In my day job, which is where I am right now, I work in housing, actually in affordable housing, and kind of find the commentary interesting and quite, a little bit problematic. But anyways, I'm executive director at a nonprofit housing organization called Mainstate. I do want to say, and I know the committee knows this, it's not just the frontage, it's not just the FSI, and it's not just the compatibility, but it's all, all of these things taken together, in my view. I can't speak for planning, and I will just say that I'm not an expert, we're relatively new to the neighborhood in the Long Branch guidelines, but the, there was no rationale provided. I mean, I read the architect's rationale, and they basically just dismissed the guidelines entirely. In any case, I also want to say we are a family of five living next door, and I find it ironic to hear that, you know, our houses might be considered not large enough for a family of four, which is what was stated in the rationale.
So, sorry, sorry, you're, you're in a, I'm just looking at the map we got here, so you're, you're in a twenty-five-foot lot, correct?
We are, yeah.
Was that a lot that was previously severed, or was that already, was it together with sixty-nine and seventy-one, do you know, or? Is it a new house or an older house?
It's a top-up on a bungalow, the bungalow was there a long, long time, and we purchased the house just, just about three years ago.
Okay, and you don't know what your FSI is, do you?
I guess it's probably around point four, a little over point, point four.
Okay.
I don't know though, yeah.
Okay.
The, the last opening comment I'd just like to, to make is, I think it's unfortunate we're here today. My, my neighbor, Mr. Sedigfar, the applicant, stated to me on Monday that the designs before you do not reflect his own direction to his architect, and that he intended to defer, I know those are just words, but I think it does reflect his own recognition that the variances are not minor, and that his proposal is not compatible with the neighborhood. Finally, also carries a friend of mine, the house just next to us at sixty-nine, and I want to disagree, although there are a number of twenty-five-foot lots, the soldier home with the integrated garage is not at all a feature of our street. It is not at all prevalent. So finally, if, if you could put up my letter, I provided some photographs, and I'd just like to, to explain to you, to illustrate to you what they're showing in terms of the impact on us with the application. Yep, so that's it, so.
Yeah, hang on a second, so we want to get your letter up, well done.
Sorry, I'm running, yeah, running to that, that does look like mine.
Yeah, okay. I just want to find our own copies on our computers, so we can follow along, because I can't, I can't see that well.
Okay, sorry, no problem. Yeah, so this, this photo here, there isn't, there isn't a variance on the side lot, so that's not what it's showing. It's actually, if you look up, there are a couple of windows there, the one that's further to the back of our house is just a bathroom window, but the one closer there, that's my seven-year-old daughter's window. If you go to the next photo, you can see from her room looking out. And the request, I just want to state that the request for sixty percent more FSI than was required, it will result in this view and the light that comes into her room being replaced by, by a solid brick wall. There won't be light even from the east because, because Mr. Sedigfar is proposing not only to build sixty percent above the allowed FSI, but he also related to that the depth of his house will go further back, so she won't get any light even creeping in from the east around the side of his house in, in addition to facing a brick wall. So the other thing about the sixty percent increase in FSI, and again, you know, I think it's, it's clear, but worth saying that it puts basically, if you allow the severance, it puts three houses, the equivalent of three houses over. it puts three houses, the equivalent of three houses over what would be allowed, or one and a half houses in the place of one, that's what sixty percent increase in the FSI means. This photo here is of our back deck, and actually, if you could go to the next photo rather than this one. So, it's a little misleading, the fence in the back there is only four feet, four feet high, and this deck is three feet high, I'm actually standing on the deck taking the photograph. And with, with the request and the plan to build further back than our, than our property, which he could do as a right with a bungalow, can't, can't do it without your permission with what, with the proposal that's in front of you, it's going to ruin our deck. So, it's, it'll set up another brick wall barrier right behind us there, it'll trap the southern sun and turn this into a, into a. The other, the other issue with this back deck is that because he intends to build the integrated garage in the front, it's pushed the whole house up, and it's pushed the whole house back, it's driving the request for the increase in FSI. But in the back, it'll mean that he's going to build a deck that the bottom of his deck will be eight feet up in the air, so they'll be hanging right up, right up there over our deck while we're baking next to a brick wall. So that's going to, it'll, it'll very much negatively impact our experience of our, of our back deck and our backyard. Certainly, with the back deck, they'll, they'll look to add a privacy screen as well, and so that solid space that will be facing to the north of us, it will in fact extend beyond the end of his, of his structure.
Okay, Mr. Mukherjee, can you please wrap up, because you're over five minutes, you're real close to six minutes.
Okay, yep. So my, the very last thing, and again, I think it might be obvious to say, but the impacts that I'm describing are clearly the impacts of the incompatibility of what's being proposed here. We bought our home because we love its character, and its character fits with the neighborhood perfectly. We often sit on the front porch while our kids play, and we interact with our neighbors and our community there. The proposal makes absolutely no attempt to fit with the character, and the height, depth, and FSI are all driven by this cookie-cutter design with integrated garage at grave and pushing everything up and back. And I hope I've shown you how those choices are going to impact on our house and on my daughter's, my daughter's bedroom and our back deck in particular. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mukherjee. Okay, so we now have the two speakers left from Long Branch. Sure.
Hello, I think Christine is going first. Christine, are you there?
We're just going in order, Judy, you can go now.
Do you want me to go? Okay. Hello, Mr. Chair and members of the committee, my name is Judy Gibson, I'm the vice chair of the Long Branch Neighborhood Association and the chair of the Tree Canopy Preservation and Enhancement Committee. If I could ask staff to please pull up two letters, so one is my letter dated August twentieth, and the other is the memo from Urban Forestry dated May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty.
Members for your.
And while they're doing that.
It's going to be fifteen.
There's my letter, correct? And then also the memo from Urban Forestry. So if we could do the Urban Forestry, May twenty-seventh memo first, please, that would be great. It's dated May twenty-seventh. Okay, so if we could go to the first page here. So, the chair mentioned that the consolidated memo, which is a form memo and looks at all the applications of the committee's hearing, gave a condition three. However, this application is unique in that it has a standalone email memo from Urban Forestry dated May twenty-seventh, where you can see Urban Forestry requests that the Committee of Adjustment panel deny the consent.
Judy, can you slow down a bit, please? Can you try to enunciate and slow down, please, because I want to follow you?
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
So the email, or the memo from Urban Forestry actually is requesting this committee to deny the consent due to impact to the cancellation of planned city tree and the permanent loss of viable planting space. So this is the issue here, it is not removing a protected tree, but it is removing the potential to put a planted, a newly planted tree, which Urban Forestry was planning on doing on this location. And.
Hold on, I don't understand, I don't understand, I want you to clarify that. Can you clarify? So, I understand by doing a, making a house bigger, you lose planting area, right? Because if you do an extension, you can't plant there, but can you not plant somewhere else? Like, I don't quite understand the rationale of saying, we lose the potential to plant the tree, can you not plant it somewhere else?
Yeah.
Like in front on the.
So if you go into my letter now, if you go in, yes, so if you go into my letter, you'll see.
Yep.
If you take a look at my letter, and you actually zoom into page three of my letter.
Uh-huh.
When a lot is, this is the existing lot, and you can't really tell from the view from the front of the lot, but there is not enough room on that boulevard, it's about a foot boulevard, it's very narrow, so there's not enough room to plant on the boulevard. And if you take a look at the image, if you could blow this up a little bit, please, this image on page three, this is of Fifty Thirty-Eighth Street, which was severed probably ten years ago, I don't have the exact date, but you can see where a lot is severed.
Yep.
It creates permanent holes in the tree canopy, and after ten years, there still is no tree planted in front of this property.
Yeah.
And if you look at the street view, you see why. I don't know where the services run underground, but oftentimes, the services underground interfere with planting. But in this case, you can clearly see that you've got wires running in between over possibly the only plantable space left. So when you start severing a lot and putting two driveways, and you put the plantable space in the middle, and then you run the servicing, and then you run the wires over top, you're never able to put a large canopy tree in that spot. So you forever lose the ability of planting a, a large tree up front, you could plant a shrub, but what the city is looking for is large canopy trees.
Correct.
Because that creates the green infrastructure benefits.
Miss Gibson, can you.
So that's why Urban Forestry.
Right, but wouldn't there be room, and I agree, I see where there's, looks like there's a sale sign already there, but see where the sale sign is between those two properties? Is that where the wires are? It's hard to see, because wouldn't there be room to put a tree there? I agree, trees are great, and you lose, but replacement trees are good too. There's no room, you see where there's a sale sign, like, looks like sort of right between the two properties?
Not, not based on this particular plan, there's insufficient space.
I see.
And as you see on the image for Fifty Thirty-Eighth Street, they've run the driveway all the way over to the porch, and on this application, they have not yet done that, but there's nothing stopping someone from doing that, because what happens is when they get out of their car, they're standing on grass, so then they run a sidewalk or like a walkway, or they extend their driveway, and that reduces the plantable space. And then when you have wires over top, there is no space for the trees.
Okay.
So I just wanted to speak to the fact that you asked why planning had an information report, we're confused about that as well, because we spent seven days in a recent T-Lab hearing at Seventy Thirty-Sixth Street, where planning also didn't have a problem with the severance. The Committee of Adjustment refused the severance in that situation, the applicant appealed it, we spent seven days in a T-Lab hearing, and it was refused by T-Lab. And the chair of the T-Lab, Ted Yow, said, "I'm not granting the severance or the variances, the first part of these reasons considers the physical character tests, and the second, the protection of the natural environment policies of the official plan. The success of the Long Branch Residents' Association lies in the fact that they understand that both are interrelated." So after seven days of hearing, we did get a refusal on that one, T-Lab has refused every single consent in Long Branch since they've been formed. The applicant across the street that applied Seventy-Four Thirty-Eighth Street that the agent mentioned, did not, they abandoned the appeal process, and that property was not severed. So, you can see there's a problem, this built form is not prevailing, there's only actually four of them in the entire zoning area, so it's certainly not a character that's there, removing the ability to plant trees is not within the character of the neighborhood. So it's against the policies of the official plan, it's not conforming to those, it doesn't respect to the zoning bylaws, it's not desirable for this particular location, so it fails all the tests that are required for a minor variance. So we would ask this committee to please refuse this application.
Okay, thank you. Last speaker, Christine Mercado, from Long Branch Neighborhood Association as well. Ms. Mercado? Okay.
Yes. Hello.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Hello, Mr. Chair, it's Christine Mercado, I'm the chair of the Long Branch Neighborhood Association, and I live at eleven Atherton. Would I be able to get staff to pull up my letter, please?
Yeah, and members, it's number twenty. Yep.
So, I will be speaking to, I will be skimming over some sections, because as the last speaker, people, people tend to emphasize certain things. So if we could zoom in on page three, please? Page three? There you go, okay, so I actually can't see that, can you come in a little bit closer, please? Okay, so I am actually going to speak about the fact that the severance actually is not in character, and, but also speaking to the guidelines, how the proposed built form is not in character either. So as Mr. Jamison mentioned, Thirty-Eighth Street is actually at a tipping point right now, and one thing that the LBNA does understand is that built form, lot size, and tree canopy are all interrelated, and plus history are all interrelated in building the character of Long Branch. So if you look at the lot configuration, I know you can see that in the red, where it's around the star, which is the subject property, and people keep on going back to the twenty-five foot lot configuration, that is along this section of Thirty-Eighth Street. I would like to point out, because it was a question on the floor, that this lot configuration was established in the nineteen twenties, and there was a little bit of activity in the nineteen, in the nineteen fifties, but that lot configuration has been stabilized since then. So with regards to Fifty Forty and, sorry, Fifty and Forty Thirty-Eighth, those are actually quite new severances, they were not subject to the guidelines, and they were actually done under the watch of the OMB, which is a whole reason why we have T-Lab now, is because the city of Toronto was not satisfied with how, how the OMB was actually dealing with severances. And I have to echo that in Long Branch, was that they seemed to not meet a severance application that they didn't like. So, I am concerned about the fact that planning doesn't have concerns with this lot configuration, because the mixture is what defines Thirty-Eighth Street. So there's a little bit, there's a few bigger lots, and there are a few smaller lots. And this lot configuration that is on this section of Thirty-Eighth Street, yes, there are twenty-five foot lots, but there are no examples of two above a garage. And this is the thing that sort of concerns me with the built form, is that it does not respect or reinforce the designs that are actually on this street. Can we just go down to the next, the next exhibit, please? Okay, so Mr. Donald actually spoke about the frontage and severances, and this is just an excerpt from the pages of the Long Branch Character Guidelines that was commissioned by SBN. And contrary to what the applicant stated, the LBNA was not a driver of this, of these guidelines, we were actually, we were actually incorporated after the guidelines were, were conceived of. So, but we are a big supporter of, okay, can you scroll down, please? Okay, and then we speak about FSI. So as represented, represented by the blue shades and the green shades, so green would be a point three-five FSI, and then the blue shades would be, would be under point three-five. So as you can see, when you're talking about prevailing FSI, no matter what lot size, it's actually point three-five or lower. Okay, there are exceptions as the neighborhood develops, however, it is not prevailing. And you can just see that just by the color coding, and this is all done from city data. Can you scroll down, please? Okay, and then we actually look at what's on that block of Thirty-Eighth Street. So this is about the closest thing that you would get to something that this particular home is the, is one of the biggest homes on this block, and as you can see, it's one floor above a garage, but you can also see the reduction of plantable space. So really, when it comes down to the integrated garages, this is not a particularly practical, a practical driveway solution, because inevitably, the plantable space gets, gets reduced. So if you can scroll down again, please? Okay, so this is Seventy-Four Thirty-Eighth, this is across the street, this is, the house is still there, and the severance application was actually abandoned. And one of the strengths of this application was the fact that we got an outside consultant to come in that was hired by the city of Toronto, and his position was that the severance application didn't observe the considerations of chapter three, which is environmental concerns, where it reboots trees and plantable space.
Mercado, can you please wrap up, because you're at five and a half minutes?
I can. So I would like to, yep, I would like to speak to the guidelines. So I do realize that the neighbor actually did submit a rationale, however, I do question the fact that there are things that are just not addressed in this application, it does not reinforce the one to two stories. This, this is on page thirty, thirty of the guidelines, and it doesn't reflect the transition. Also on page forty-two, the ground floor, so the ground floor is actually at the front, but what it does is that it's three steps to the front facade, then it's four more steps onto the main floor, and then you're making elevated deck out to the, to the backyard. So I do actually sympathize with the next-door neighbor, that his house is actually being overwhelmed by this proposal, and it does really impact what is, what is prevailing in the neighborhood. So I have no doubt that this property can be redeveloped, however, in keeping it, keeping the property unsevered, okay, and putting up a home at point three-five with a secondary suite or not, you're still observing the policies of the growth plan, and it does actually add to that mixture that's on Thirty-Eighth Street, that we think is very important to Long Branch character. So I'm open to any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Ms. Mercado. Any questions before we move on back to the applicant to rebut, respond to all those speakers' issues? Okay. So, we'll go back to Mr. Dadashi, it's been a while, but we, I don't know if you've been taking notes, so we need to hear your response to everything that's been stated. We did have one neighbor in support, oh, the Mr. Kamerek's asking, I believe, was it Mr. Nickel, I think, spoken support? There was one neighbor that spoke, it was Mr. Nickel, I believe?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, so we do have one neighbor who's spoken support. Now we're going to go back to Mr. Dadashi for his response, and then we'll see if anyone has any follow-up questions. Hello?
Okay.
And again, since we've let people go, we've had over a half an hour long of response, so if you need a little more than five minutes, I will grant it to you, because you've got a lot to respond to.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, I'm going to do my best. I'm going to first start by addressing the comments about Urban Forestry. There was an initial letter from Urban Forestry about this development, we responded to them, and then if you see on the latest documentation from them for the Committee of Adjustment hearing dated August eighteenth, they've actually changed their position to approval or conditional approval, and they're not, no longer requesting deferral or denial of the application, condition number three on that aspect.
They've asked for urban, their condition number three, correct?
That's right. It's changed, I think there was a miscommunication, the actual driveway, we have to plant a tree for our house. There was some miscommunication with them, because the existing driveway right now, the width of it and the area is actually larger than what's going to be proposed on the two new houses, thereby actually increasing the green canopy area available.
Yeah, can you try to speak a little, enunciate a little clearer, please?
I'm sorry.
Because you're close to the microphone.
Did you?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Did you get all that, or should I repeat?
Yeah, yeah, no, I hear, I got it, I'm just, as you continue, please, slow down and enunciate.
For sure. Our, our neighbor to the south, I, you know, console with the comments he's made, I do want to emphasize that the building depth isn't a variance we're requesting, nor is the height of the building, we also, our clients directed us to remove the eight inches we were seeking on that initial line of variance with the main wall height. eight inches we were seeking on that initial line of variances, the main wall height, to provide some relief. The rear deck is not a variance, as the applicant mentioned. He's currently living in a 25-foot home. If you turn to PDF page four of our material, we've tried to transition the property with features that respect both neighbors. I'll just wait for the slide to pull up. I think you might have to scroll up. PDF page, so the fourth page from the start.
So you, you're really not enunciating. Can you try to talk a little? I'm having trouble hearing you about the other members.
It's the microphone. I'm going to take out my headset. Hang on a minute. Is that better?
Yeah, just, your voice tends to trail off as you get into the sentence, so just try to just project. It's been a long day.
Apologies.
Okay, so you're saying that there's, Urban Forestry is okay with condition three. You're saying there's no height variances. You've, you've removed variance number five dealing with the, I think it was variance five on both applications, correct? That's where we had you so far.
Yep, that's correct. The main wall height, exactly. If you look at our location of our roof, we're not, we're not maximizing the roof height. We're trying to stay in line with the adjacent neighbors, although it's going to be a little higher. And I refer the committee to the Long Branch Neighborhood Guidelines on page number 27, item F, and I quote, "It's speaking to character-defining conditions, nine-meter to 15.24-meter lot frontages and 35-meter to 45-meter lot depths. With exceptions, we're dictated through variations in the street and block network. There's no street more worthy of the noted exception than on 38th Street." And that was evident in one of the LBNA spokesperson's presentation material. The street has lots of 25-foot lots, and that's a very common thing in that block specifically. And I did reference three recent approvals at 4038th Street, at 5238th Street, 7438th Street. They're all relevant, they're all recent, and in close proximity to the subject property, and is consistent with what's being approved in the area. Many of the letters of objection we've received were from residents on 36th Street. Almost half of them are from residents on 36th Street. And they're concerned about setting precedent, and I understand that. They're worried about the impact this application would have on their street. Much of the presentation material appears to be geared towards previous applications on 36th Street. At its closest point, 36th Street is 150 meters or 500 feet away from the subject property. There's a great deal of experience from common law that goes into determining, determining statutory notice requirements for these types of planning applications. The relevant Ontario regulations have determined that the owners within 60 meters of the subject property must be notified, because these are the owners who will be most impacted by the proposed dwelling. And that's the context for the application before you today. I'd encourage this committee to view this application with a look at the immediate neighborhood and the positive support we've received from our immediate neighbors, 10 of whom are on 38th Street and are in our immediate block, and several of whom are directly behind the subject property. I believe that proposals like the one before you call for a balance of understanding between the needs of four -person family and 1,900-square-foot home, while incorporating aspects of the neighborhood design features for continuity of character.
Thank you, Mr. Dadashi. I just want to point out that, I guess, two things. First of all, so I guess there's a basic disagreement between you and the opposition as to whether this is the prevailing character. There's the issue of the street, the block, the wider neighborhood. I just want to point out, just because there's a 60-meter notification radius requirement, that doesn't mean that anyone's saying that those are the only people that are affected by the application. Certainly, people find out about it by the posted sign. It's also a statutory requirement by word of mouth and people, you know, getting the wider neighborhood involved in these things. But I appreciate that a lot of the people you're saying are on 36th Street, because they're concerned about their street following the pattern that your street seems to have developed to. So thank you all the neighbors for your interest and your participation, making your submissions, staying on the line on this application, certainly as opposed to having to come down here to the Tobago Civic Center. Now we're going to bring it into committee and to see if there are any follow-up remaining questions for any of the participants here this afternoon so far, or if we're ready for a motion on this application. Any questions? Okay, any discussion, motion?
I, I could make, I could start with a motion. I made some notes, because there were so many speakers and so many great speakers actually on this particular proposal. I specifically want to thank Christine. So it's not the prevailing use in Long Branch, really, based on what Christine showed us. I think the FSI is too high at 0.56, because the allowable FSI is 0.35. And after denying the application at 61 Burrows, I can't really in any good conscience approve this one. So I will not be supporting this application, and I move for refusal, because it is not minor, nor do I believe that it is desirable for the particular.
So you don't feel the consensus are appropriate or desirable, and the, or the variances, your motion is the application be refused? Do we have a second here for that motion? Mr. Palmer, all in favor? And I will abstain to avoid a tie. The motion carries two to one with one abstention. So you're opposed? Yeah, he didn't put up his hand, so I figured he did. So the motion carries, the application is refused, two to one with an abstention. Thank you. Thank you, neighbors. Thank you, Mr. Dadashi. And thank you, Long Branch, Long Branch people. Okay, does anyone, we have, we have a few more applic-, well, quite a number. We have more applications. Does anyone looking, want a break, or we can continue? Break? Okay, so we're going to take a five-minute break, but we convene at quarter to three, 2:45.
Did she find the cigarette in my pocket?
No.
She's always holding her cigarette.
Oh, really? You're not doing yourself.
Oh, there we go.
Don't slam your finger.
It's, it gets stuck on the handle of the dust. It's not your finger.
Well, luckily you're not on care.
Well, we still wear our hats, you know? Yeah. Vibration. Oh, you were right. You know, like years before. Okay, so, yeah, I forgot about the magnetic. Next application is available.
Number 15, A, B, and C, 264 Beta Street. And it's an application, again, for consent to sever. Okay. Uh, this is to sever the property to two undersized lots and related variance applications, B and C. Eight variances on the first one, and probably eight variances on the second one. Planning is recommending refusal of the application. We have a covering letter, a site-specific zoning bylaw, supporting material, including an applicant's presentation. And we have planning recommending refusal. We have forestry requesting variance, conditions three and five, which is a denial. And we have registered as speakers on this application. Only one speaker, Franco Romano, is agent. Mr. Romano?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Franco Romano, here on behalf of the owner. Thank you.
There's no, no opposition here?
No opposition. No, there is some support letters that should be on file.
Yes.
So happy, happy to walk through a brief overview, if the committee likes.
Okay, sure.
Okay. So I want to jump down.
Sorry, and before you start, I just want to flag to the members, we did send you an email of the Engineering and Construction Services memo, so there are conditions from there that weren't in your original package.
15? That was in 17, wasn't it? Was that in 17 or 15?
I think it's.
I can check my email.
Go ahead, Franco.
Okay.
Ms. Bartisik, were you referring to sending an email to me or to the members?
To the members.
Okay, thank you. No worries. I'd like to go to page five of my slides, please, if we can start there. One more line.
Slide.
I'll come right up.
Slide one?
Slide five. I'm going to go right to the, I'm going to work my way backwards a little bit. This is, this is the, the official plan, and it's section 4.1.5 of the official plan. And this neighborhood exemplifies what I've highlighted here, which is that you're going to find neighborhoods where there is no prevailing character. And the official plan does say that prevailing will mean the most frequently occurring. And then in such cases, a direction to respect and reinforce a prevailing physical character will not preclude development whose physical characteristics are not the most frequently occurring, but do exist in substantial numbers within the neighborhood, provided that the physical characteristics of what is proposed is materially consistent with the physical character of the neighborhood and already has a significant presence on properties within basically the block. It allows you to go beyond the block, but we'll just look at the block. If we go to page one, what we're going to see is that the subject's property today, as a 15.24-meter-wide lot, represents, in, in the terms of the planning department, because they talk about majority, the 15.24 meters that the site is today, it is in the fifteen point two four meters that the site is today, it is in the minority. Ten percent of the lots are the same or larger than the subject's site, and fifteen point two four is basically the largest. By contrast, what you have is twenty-nine percent of the lots are, are seven point six two meters, which is what is proposed. So the prop, so the proposal is really to bring the property into, um, into a position that meets more of the, more lots that have the smaller lot size, which is not only seven point six two meters, but smaller than the bylaw requires. If you look at that second row of my table there, you see smaller than the zoning bylaw requires, thirty-nine percent of the lots in the, on the, in the immediate area are smaller than the zoning bylaw, and that is, and that is a larger percentage than the thirty-five percent within the neighborhood. In terms of lot area, seventy-nine percent are smaller than the bylaw requires. So what is a characteristic of this street and the neighborhood is lots that are undersized relative to the zoning bylaw. And the proposal is seeking to achieve that sort of development. The map that, that is underneath that table basically shows all of the different lot frontages. There's, I believe, from my stats here, there are, uh, eight different lot frontages in fourteen different lot areas within the, within the block. And you'll see that the, the, I'm gonna call it pink, it's like a flesh color at the front in the circle that's on, on the subject site. There's only four of those. Whereas the other thirty, thirty-seven are something different. So the proposal is bringing what is now a minority position into a proposed majority position if we're looking at the, at the staff references, and staff only raised a concern with the lot frontage. They didn't raise a concern with the built form at all. What you'll also see on this page is a number of properties that form part of the regeneration. Some of them are new builds, some of them are top-ups or building extensions, and they all range in FSI from up to one point one four. So recent approvals, so some of these that are on this table here are zero point four three for like the one house, and one of those has got like a cutout. Instead of a garage, it has a, it has a carport, or not even a carport, it, it has a drive-through. In that upper right-hand corner, or sorry, in the, um, the second photograph on the right-hand side, you can drive from the front to the backyard through the, through the house. So that has got a different deployment of floor area than what's being proposed. Um, and what you'll see on the next page, on page three, sorry, page two, is a site plan drawing, and the site plan drawing clearly shows that the city tree is not being impacted by the driveway. It's not being impacted by the lot frontage, and it's not being impacted by the parking space width. Those are the three items that urban forestry recommended denial because of, of the proposed development. So there is, urban forestry does have a tree permit in our, in Arbor's report from December of twenty nineteen, and it's my understanding they're reviewing it, even though they haven't raised it in their memorandum. So the, the two dwellings are pretty much within the existing permitted building envelope, it's shorter in length. There are side yard setbacks, zero point nine and zero point six, and that's reflective of the newer construction and even some older construction in terms of this neighborhood, so they are totally, uh, appropriate. In terms of building height, we'll see that this area, because it has a, a mixture of the new and the old bylaw, uh, there are some prevailing bylaws that allow a height that's actually taller than what's proposed. You know what's proposed is a flat roof building, but you can have a, a sloped roof, and this is on slide three. You can have a sloped roof that would create a larger building height with actually the eaves extending closer to the side lot lines. So, subject to any questions, Mr. Chairman, I would submit that the proposal does indeed, uh, satisfy the four tests for a minor variance. There is no unacceptable adverse impact, it is an appropriate regeneration with modest-sized housing, but twenty-eight hundred square feet.
Thank you, Mr. Romano, so. Very good, uh, thanks for going through all of that, and I guess you're right, planning really didn't talk about the build form because they sort of dealt with the refusal based on the lot frontage. So if the lot frontage, what's, what's the reason for the divergent position between what you're telling us and what planning is telling us? It is that the, the catchment area, what they're looking at is the prevailing area, 'cause they're saying on their second page, uh, only six lots have a lot frontage of seven point six two, and those have existing semi-detached dwellings. Should the applicant be approved, does proposed result in lot friendship si- seven point six with a lot area of two point six two, point eight? It's been the smallest in the area. As such, it feels in keeping with the size and configuration of existing lots within the surrounding area or the immediate block of Beta. So your analysis tells us something different.
It does, it does, because this, my analysis in my opinion is more wholesome, 'cause what they don't tell you is that there are four lots at six point five five meters.
Nice.
So there, there are actually ten, there, there are actually twelve lots that are seven point six two meters or smaller. And those are, those numbers are not reflected in the planning staff report. And what is also not reflected in the report is that the subject site today has one of four lots of fifteen point two four meters. That's even a smaller percentage than what the proposal is seeking to achieve.
Yeah.
Right? If you're looking at two baskets, fifteen point two four meters.
Yeah.
The propos, the site right now is twenty-five percent.
So are they wrong when they say, or they're correct, when they say within the immediate block, the majority of lots on Beta have frontages that ranges between eleven point nine one and fifteen point two four? Only six have lot frontages out. So, so basically, it should've said six have lot frontages of seven point six two, and seven have lots that are actually less. Are they misleading us here?
What they said, actually what they should say is what I have in my table, the lot frontage, 'cause this is, 'cause this is only for the block. Lot frontage range six point five five meters to fifteen point two four meters.
Yeah, they don't tell us about those. Okay.
Yeah, and the lot area is two twenty-three point four to five fifty-seven point four.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Moran, Moreno? Yeah, you're right, it doesn't talk about the built form and whether that's appropriate, because they seem to just get to the point of the lot frontage and stop there. Figured they didn't have to go any farther, they couldn't justify it, but they, they were silent as to what, they didn't get to the point of dealing with the variances, they figured it's enough to tell us that they don't think the severance is appropriate.
Well, I think staff are not shy to comment on built form, even when they talk about lot frontage and lot size. So in this case, they, they have not. They're silent on it because they don't have a problem with the built form. So that tells me, that reaffirms my, my analysis of this neighborhood, is I've done a number of projects in this neighborhood, whether it's a building addition, a replacement house, or a severance, that the built form is very much not only in keeping, but respects and reinforces the built form within the neighborhood. And it's appropriate for the lot size that's being proposed. Otherwise, there would be issues of concern as, relative to too much building on the lot.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Romano? Someone ready for a motion?
Members, we need a motion.
All right, I'll, uh, make a motion for approval. The, uh, severance, I believe is keeping in character with what's, uh, existing in the area. Uh, the variances requested are minor, meet the four tests in the, uh, Planning Act. And that would be subject to the, uh, transportation engineering conditions and subject to the, uh, forestry condition one and, uh, three.
One and three?
Just three, I think.
Three. Three, three, I said. Three and five I had written here. Three or refused, it's three.
Well, five brings you back to one.
Right.
So.
So it is one and three.
It's one, it's one and three. I've got one and three.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you for that motion, a second for that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries three to one. Thank you, Mr. Romano.
Thank you kindly, enjoy your afternoon.
Okay. Okay, our next application is item number sixteen. Is a nice one. Um. Uh, let me just get this up here.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Chair, for item sixteen, we actually have, uh, Joe, uh, Battaglia. Um, we received communication late yesterday afternoon that the applicant intends to request a deferral.
Who's Joe Battaglia, is he the, instead of Kevin Liu?
That's correct.
I'll, I'll call you back.
Okay, so this is, just let me introduce, this is an application to, uh, for further variances from approval in September two thousand sixteen. Uh, I guess for severance and to build some houses, and they built, they got significant generous, uh, uh, variances to go along with that, including a uh, FSI of point eight seven, whereas point four five is permitted, and they actually built it to point nine seven, they're looking to legalize that. There was also a, um, the issue of the, uh, second first floor height, which I think is less problematic. Oh, it's a side yard setback? Okay, yeah, side yard setback, uh, where they got permission at point five and they actually built it point four four. So very curious to hear from Mr. Liu or Mr. Battaglia what's, what the story is, uh, on this, but, uh, you're looking for a deferral request, for what purpose, sir?
Now, just to clarify, Mr. Battaglia, in the future, you are required to pre-register because we do not have you on our list. And you're not a registered agent.
Mr. Battaglia, are you an associate of Mr. Liu's?
Uh, hi, this is Kevin Liu, uh, and Joe Battaglia is our architect.
Yeah, can you speak a little louder, please? I can't hear you, can you get closer to the microphone?
Okay, uh, this is Kevin Liu, uh, Joe is our a- architect, representing us for this meeting, for this hearing.
And who are you, are you the owner, homeowner, or are you the agent?
I'm the, I'm the owner of the, yeah, the project.
Now, Mr. Liu, the invitation that was sent to you clearly says, do not share this with other people, because agents who are not registered are not permitted to speak, so you will be representing this application, not Mr. Battaglia.
Well, he, his name is on my application, but it's okay, that's fine.
Okay, and the other thing is, um, in terms of a deferral request, which we're just hearing about, my opinion, before I hear from the other members, is that this is a situation where something has been built beyond what is required. You built it point nine seven and you're allowed point eight seven. So it would be wonderful to defer it, defer it for one month, for six months, for two years, because you're gonna have to remove that if you get refused, subject to any appeal. So I would be re- reluctant, given you've gone ahead and built beyond what you were permitted. You were given very generous variance for the floor space index at point eight ni- eight seven, where point four five is permitted. And turns out now, I don't know how this came to anyone's attention while you're back here, you actually built it point nine seven. And, uh, so my opinion would be, I would not agree to a deferral, because a deferral would be the greatest thing you could do. You can come back in six months when you get back on the agenda or in twenty twenty-one and say, oh, I want another deferral, and I want another deferral. And meanwhile, you don't have to deal with the problem to the, uh, detriment of whoever, you know, to the fact that you built beyond what you were permitted. And I'd like to hear why, how that came about, was it a mistake, was it on purpose? So please let me know.
We didn't do.
Uh, well, first of all, let's deal with the deferral request, and after that, in the event we're proceeding, I'd like to know what happened here, how this came to pass that, uh, someone who was given a great a privilege of getting these variances went and built beyond what it was approved. So, anyone else have any issues on the issue of the deferral request? Do we have that in writing, Paul, or?
No, no.
This just came as a conversation last, last evening?
There was an email, but he hasn't explained what he's gonna do.
Okay, and what's the purpose of the deferral, like I said, it's already built? Mr. Liu?
Uh, first of all, uh, this was built by two builders, and we bought this project.
First of all, I can't hear you, so you're gonna have to speak a little louder.
Um, this actually was a build by a different builder.
It was built by? Oh, another builder? So you're saying someone else who a previous owner, now someone else has bought the property?
Okay, so, uh, here's the history, so the owner of the original owner had the land severed and, uh, variance approved.
Right.
Then they, he sold it to a builder.
Okay.
If this builder built, built, uh, well, that's about, uh, two years ago, I think. Okay, you started building things, so it was a construction error, about a one inch, uh, on every two months, by two inches over what was approved. And, and so, and then, you know, because of various issues, they actually went back around. So we bought the project, the project, uh, over about, uh, three months ago.
Okay, you weren't aware of this problem when you bought the property? Did you realize when you bought the property that it'd be built in excess of the approval granted?
No, no, we brought the property, uh, we.
Can you please talk louder, sir, I can't hear you. I can't hear you, sir.
Unbelievable.
Speak a little louder.
Okay, I'm not talking loudly, I don't even know why.
I wanna know, when you brought this property, two seven five, four nine nine seven Ontario, who's showing as the owner, you're telling me that they bought it from the builder who got the approval and built it beyond what he was permitted to? Is that what you're telling me?
Okay, so, no, yeah, then we bought it, what happened was the, the builder made a mistake in construction, so it's a, it's, it's more within the margin of error in construction? It's about a one to two inches over.
Two inches?
So the, the, the bui- the builder didn't do it purposely. Didn't do it intentionally to enlarge anything, he just made a, a, it's really within a, a error of construction, you know, it's a margin of error.
So, sir, that's, it looks like you're over by twenty-three meters. You were allowed, you were given permission at two oh three points.
No, 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 you got the wrong. No, no, you got the wrong thing, that's the reason we asked for deferral, because the information you have
Can you hear him?
is incorrect.
What's incorrect?
We wanted to actually, we were working with the zoning office. Do we examine? To correct information, so when we talked again, you have the right, correct information to make a decision, to make the right decision. Right now, there's no right, you don't have the, you don't have the, the, uh, uh, information.
What information don't we have? We have a house that you built, you were given permission, and I, you're, you keep fading out, so I can barely hear you.
There's never a twenty-three meters off.
Sorry?
There's never a twenty-three meters off, it's a one inch, about a one inch over, one.
Well, I'm sorry, sir, your twenty-three meters, you built more than you were permitted. That can't be a one-inch error, sir. But if you bought the property, if your client bought the property with this problem, then they inherited this problem. They should've checked on the status of the, uh, of, of, of the situation of their construction.
Sir.
Mr. Liu, hold on, hold on. First of all, when you speak, you keep fading away, you keep turning your head away from the computer or whatever you're speaking into. You submitted an application with a zoning review. So you obtained a zoning review before you applied to Committee of Adjustment. If there had been an error in that zoning review, you should've fixed the error before you even applied to committee if you thought that there was a mistake in identifying the variances. So why did you just discover the mistake now?
You are correct, we just discovered the mistake, that's the reason we are asking for deferral.
But why didn't you check that when you, before you even applied?
We, we checked, uh, uh, but, 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 well, we, we did check, but it's, you know, it's an error on my side for not thoroughly checked, but we, that we discovered the error. And we decided to. And we decided to ask for deferral so we can give you the right, the correct information. So we can make, make the right decision.
Sir, Mr. Liu, are you a planner? Are you a registered planner? What's your position in this, you an architect, the planner, what do you do? Lawyer?
I am the builder.
You're the builder? So you built this house?
Yes, a new builder, a new builder, not the one that before.
The new builder, but there's nothing to be built, this is a completed house? It's not completed yet, it's under construction? Okay, so, all I'm saying is, you got, you submitted a waiver, I understand, from staff, okay? And you got this, this memo was written ten days ago. August the seventeenth. So you had plenty of time, if you said this is a mistake and you're, you're, it's not at point nine seven, it can't be twenty-three meters, it's only an inch. You had plenty of time.
Well, if we're dealing with number nineteen as well.
So all I'm telling you is, I am not certainly, maybe the other members, or I am not gonna recommend a deferral to just allow you to put this off for another three to six months and then come back and deal with it. Because especially it's under construction, you have to know whether you have to take that twenty-three meters off the house or just completed without, at the point eight seven that was granted to you in two thousand sixteen or granted to the previous, the previous property owner. But I am certainly not gonna agree to a deferral that allows you to continue with this mistake.
Would you listen to me?
I'd listen to you if you could speak a little clearer into your microphone, we can barely hear you.
I discovered this from the zoning examiner, uh, Hensley. So I was discovering, I was discussing with him over the past ten days about his, the error that the issue, the, the letter he issued. So we were, are working on that.
Anyway, you had ten days, we have very busy agendas, and if it was something that wasn't built, I would say, fine, you wanna take three to six months and put off your building plans, but in this case, if it's already built or it's under construction, you won't know how to, is this house currently under construction or it's completed? It's still under construction, sir?
Everything's stopped.
Everything's stopped?
Everything's stopped.
You have a stop work order?
Yes, everything's stopped.
Okay. Anyway, uh, so we have a motion on the floor, a request for a deferral that was not in writing.
I still haven't clearly heard why he's asking for a deferral.
That's correct, Mr. Liu, the members are wondering why you need a deferral, and you're saying because point, it's really not at point nine seven, it's not two hundred and twenty-six point zero three square meters, you're saying that's a mistake? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, the information you have is a mistake.
So the plans that we have, that you have submitted.
He, he did his own labor.
Okay, but the plans that you have submitted, is that what has been built or is that what, what was approved?
The, the, the plan we submitted was, what was the build, which was approved, we were over, well.
Which one is it?
One inch over, one inch over what was approved.
Okay, are you also the owner of nineteen Oak Drive?
Two files, one you want and both.
Thank you, I am the owner.
Of twenty-one Oak and nineteen or just one?
There's two lot, two addresses. It's both.
So the, the other address, you're at one point two, two times coverage, that's not one, that's not two inches.
So it looks like he's set up, sir, are you the builder, you told us you're the builder, are you also the owner? Okay, Mr. Liu, listen carefully. Are you, told us you're the builder, are you also, who is the principals of two seven five four nine nine seven Ontario Inc.? And then for lot twenty-one, there's a different numbered company. Do you own those numbered company or are you just the, the builder, the contractor here? You're the owner of the properties?
I am the president.
The principal of these companies?
Two numbered companies.
Yes, those are your companies?
Yes, I'm the president.
Okay, so, I just wanna clarify, you're not just the builder, you also bought these, you're the owner of these two properties through those two numbered companies?
That's right.
You're not a third party builder, okay.
Two numbered companies.
Okay, so you were permitted, again, at point eight seven, this application, which has come to us and which you have a staff report, negative staff report, ten days ago, says you're coming in at point nine seven, and on the other lot, you're actually coming in at one point two two times coverage. Whereas that one, you were permitted at one point zero nine, so they, I guess it's a different lot size, the two lots are different sized?
So, Mr. Liu, what is the error that you're saying is incorrect? We can't hear you. Mr. Liu, do you wanna call in on the number because we, we actually can't hear you at all now? Okay, so he's gonna call us back, just for reference purposes, looking at the survey that was submitted with this application, the setback matches what's identified on the variance of point four four for both dwellings. So the reason I'm asking what the error is, is I don't know what he means by it's off by one inch.
Yeah, because what we see, it's a very, it's a significant variance from what was approved at point eight seven on one lot and one point zero whatever on the second lot. And either he's proposing or it's already been built or it's under construction, you said you went by the property, it's under construction. But it's this, and he didn't, is there a stop record or no?
Yes, they were charged, um, the double fee. Um, I'm not sure why the order to comply wasn't included in this file because it is required to be provided to the committee, so I apologize for that. But they did pay double.
Okay, so at least there's, if he needs, I was thinking that it's all completed, so if he asks for a deferral, it just means he gets to avoid the problem.
Well, what the committee could do, if you consider the deferral request once he calls in, is that we may not be able to hear the application right away, but you can provide him with a deadline to submit the revised materials.
Yeah, because it is under construction, but it's a stop work order, then it's not entirely, he would, wouldn't wanna procrastinate, if it's already built and it's a done deal, he would be very happy to.
Yeah, but you can.
As long as possible, but if he's got a stop work order, then it's at his, I wouldn't say.
It behooves him to submit materials.
He's being prejudiced by the deferral, so that will give him the impetus to come forward with what he has to come forward to and put it back on agenda because he's, he's been stopped. I wasn't aware of that.
So what we can, the committee can give a deadline to submit revisions, so even though we may have a backlog and not be able to schedule them right away, if you say by this day, you have to submit the revisions so that the application can proceed.
Do revisions, he's looking to say there must be some mistake, I'm only an inch off, how can it, you know, because it's a sizable increase in the FSI.
There's two, there's four houses under construction on this block. Are, are you also the owner of the next two?
So. Okay, so we go and hear the next application then in the meantime, or? Next one is a long one, actually, or at least they got speakers. Okay. Okay, item number. Is he back, I hear someone talking, Paul. Okay. Okay, item number seventeen. This is an application to instruct the second story addition above the existing dwelling, which will contain a secondary suite and a new rear yard deck. We have urban forestry requesting condition number one. Yeah, there's three variances. And we have registered as a speaker on this application. Uh, Agostino Monteleone is the agent, and then we have the neighbors at three seventeen street. Uh, two people, I guess we'll only have one, one speaker from that address and someone from one seventeen, so it's, uh, that's the applicant, I guess, so we have the owner, the agent, and uh, two people from the next door neighbor at number three. We have a copy of the letter they sent to the neighbors, we have planning, uh, report, transportation and some letters of opposition. And as I said, urban forestry requesting condition number one. Mr. Agostino, or Agostino Monteleone, sir, are you there?
Yes, hello. Yes, hello, my name is Agostino Monteleone, I am, I am the authorized agent for, for this property.
Okay, welcome.
And, uh, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair and members of the, of the committee. This application is for the property located at one seventeen street. The property is a detached residential dwelling, which is located on the east side of seventeen street. The neighboring property to the north, which is number three, is also a detached dwelling. To the south, there is an existing laneway adjacent to the parking, to a parking lot which faces on, on Tuletche Boulevard. The current owners of the property is the Bazooke Family Corporation, which is led by, which is led by Natalia Bazooke. She is also a longtime resident who resides, who also resides in the top four area. This proposal is intended to restore an existing building, which is in need of much needed restoration due to years of, of neglect from, from the previous property owners. This proposal includes the following, interior alteration, a second story addition, which has been proposed to, to the city's setback requirements, the addition of a ground floor and, and second store, and a second floor with deck and stairs, both, both of which would not be visible from, from seventeen street and have both been and are, and are, and are both within the city bylaw. And also, uh, it also includes the, the addition of two parking spaces at the rear of the property as there's currently no parking available at this property and, uh, the street parking is very limited here. This proposal does include the modification from a single to a, to a dual dwelling unit. And we would like to note that the property is located in such a neighborhood where the number of pre-existing multi-unit residential and both commercial properties are present. Such properties are, are located directly across the street, such as that six seventeen street and also at the street directly behind the subject property, such as number ten sixteen street. In our opinion, this, this proposal maintains the existing footprint of the building and our design intentions have been carried out with respect to as many zoning bylaws as possible for, for the proposed alterations. We have worked with city staff to achieve this. We have also carried out a search of all past decisions which have been approved within five hundred meters of the property over the last ten years. Based on the findings of our search, we feel that our requested variances are minor in nature as similar decisions have been approved over the years. Our variances are, are associated with the following. Number one, floor space index. For this application, a four percent increase in FSI has been approved. We consider this to be minor in nature and, and relatively insignificant in comparison to the other decisions which have been approved by within this area over the years. A second variance is then associated with the access to the public parking. Um, the access to, to the parking at the back of the property is provided by using an existing laneway on the south side of the property. The existing width of the laneway is only three point six six meters. In, in the letter from the city's transportation services department dated May twenty seventh, twenty twenty, it was confirmed that the proposed parking spaces at the rear of the property have been designed to their satisfaction and parking can be accommodated at each space. Their, their comments have also taken into consideration the width of the existing laneway. We would also like to note that a similar decision has been approved for properties located within the area, such as at thirty-nine twenty-first street, where, where a three point two meter wide driveway provides access to parking spaces, which has been previously approved. Our third and final variance is in regards to the rear yard landscape. For this application, we are simply two point nine percent below the minimum rear yard landscaping requirement. We, we also consider this to be very minor and feel that it is consistent with other, with, with other decisions that have been approved over the years. In summary, we would like to state again that, in our opinion, these variances are considered to be minor in nature and we do not feel that they detract from the character of this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and you're perfect, exactly five minutes. Question for you, sir, so yeah, you, there's a previous application to committee in two thousand eighteen, which was refused. You were asking at that point for one point zero two times coverage for floor space index, so I see you're now at point six four, just point four over, so, point zero four over, so a much different application. So, thank you for that presentation, um, let's hear from the, um, the neighbor at number three, and I guess we're gonna have one speaker, either Jason or Corinne, uh, not two, and you'll have a chance to respond to what their concerns are.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Jason Worster, I'm the neighbor directly north of one seventeen.
Okay, you're coming through nice and clear.
Great, I was concerned.
I'm, I'm just, I wonder why some people come through really clear and other people don't.
Headset.
Go ahead, thank you.
This, this is a, a unique situation since one seventeen street sits, uh, sits directly on my lot line. The current house is in very poor condition as it's been sitting vacant for the past four and a half years. And it currently has an unsafe order, which missed the deadline for resolution. Um, as well, MLS has an order that the owner needs to cut the grass since they haven't done it this year. Um, so I'm just a little bit nervous when, if they get the permit to have, uh, multiple dwellings there, that they'll actually take care of their property.
Okay.
So variance number two, um, the, the laneway, it's quite a narrow laneway and the neighbor to the south of the property has actually just put a perimeter construction fence um, around their property, which actually makes the laneway as wide as the laneway is. And in the past, the Baziks, while doing any work on the property, have blocked the laneway with trucks. Um, so for them to carry out any work, they're going to have to, uh, see if they can get a permit on the laneway because there's really not a possibility to do work on the house, given that the parking lot's fenced. And currently, the Baziks have three building, uh, three permits under the city, one for a new basement walkout and two plumbing related permits. Um, the permits state that they're adding an additional suite, um, given the fact they haven't been approved to have a secondary unit on the proposed second floor addition yet. My assumption is that they've been given permission by the city to add a secondary unit in the basement of the current bungalow. Um, so if this application today is approved, will that prevent the Baziks from making the house a triplex? Um, I was told originally when the Baziks bought the house, they were planning to make it into a triplex. And I see from the plans that they have raised the ceiling height of the basement and, uh, and prepped the building for a triplex. Um, in the previous committee meeting, there were two minor variance requests that were present on the twenty nineteen notice dated June twentieth, twenty nineteen. They're currently missing, so I'm not sure if the bylaw's been changed, but basically it was regarding the addition of a secondary suite. Um, and that stated that a secondary suite is permitted use provided that an addition or exterior alteration to a building to accommodate a secondary suite does not alter or add to a main wall or roof that faces a street. And in fact, this one does alter because it's adding a whole new, uh, new second story. Um, and the second one was that a secondary suite is permitted use provided that the entire building was constructed more than five years prior to the introduction of a secondary suite. So I'm not sure if those have been changed, um, as far as city bylaws, but I just thought I would bring that up. Um, I'm concerned about the eaves on the north side. Um, I'm concerned about eaves on the north side of the second story. Um, the setback of the eaves is only point three meters from the property line. Um, and the new second story is point six from the property line. I know that if they were to build a new building, it would need to be at least point nine from the property line, so I'm, I'm not sure um, if that's permitted, but uh, it's more just because it's like someone else had said earlier, it's going to reduce the amount of natural light coming into our four windows which are facing south. Um, and as well, there's a privacy screen on the second floor balcony which extends the building about five feet further. Um, and one last thing in the plans, it shows stucco on the north wall, given the proximity to the property line. I just want to make sure that the material used will be non-combustible and will not cross the property line more than the current siding on the house. And that's it. Thank you for the chance to speak.
Okay, thank you, Mister Worster. Question, um, you brought up a very good point which I want to hear from staff as to the difference between the application that was refused in two thousand eighteen and the different variances. First of all, there was a zoning review done by staff on this application. It wasn't by waiver, that they didn't just miss it. And just to confirm that likely what's happened is the bylaws maybe have changed with respect to the permissions for a secondary suite. Um, and also I'd like to hear from the applicant as you would, and get information about this oversized second story or platform. Is it off a, is it off a common area space where you can have parties or is it off just the bedroom, master bedroom to have a cup of coffee? But it is double what's permitted, so I want to hear from that as well. Um. So perhaps we can hear from staff and then, then your concern is about the dry, the, the uh, the width of the laneway going to the parking. You, you mentioned that, you're concerned that that's too tight?
Uh, it is.
But it's a city, it's a city laneway, correct?
In the past, it's a city laneway, but in the past, anytime they've been doing work, they've parked in the laneway causing traffic to drive through the parking lot um, to go past the house. So now that the parking lot's totally blocked off, like there's fence right along the edge of the laneway, that's not going to be a possibility and there's currently no staging area around that house because the backyard is disaster.
So I don't know if the issue is, is you're not allowed to park in the laneway, so that's a violation, whereas before they could squeeze around, but now they won't be able to, so now perhaps someone will have to call parking control or deal with it in some other manner. But, yeah, it's what it is. So, okay, so um, thank you for that presentation. If there's nothing else you'd like to add, we're gonna see if, see if committee members have any questions for you. Uh, and then we'll take it back and get a res- have the applicant respond to your concerns and take it in for a decision.
Sounds good.
Anyone have any questions for Mister Worster? No?
I, I have a question.
Hold on. How many variances here? Three.
Three variances.
Seventeen, okay. Okay, I'm looking, yeah, the old, the old, I was just had the old application up here which had like eleven or ten or something. So correct, there's only three variances and we want to hear from staff that some of those variances with respect to the secondary suite aren't appearing because have they done a, has this been, this application been subject to a, a review or was it a waiver?
So, this application, they did submit a zoning review and the second suite provisions in the bylaw have changed recently in the last few years. So, um, that's maybe why certain variances don't appear anymore.
Sure, okay, so that was just what Mister Worster said, I thought we should get some explanation, so that's the explanation for that. And now we can go back and uh, get the response from. Oh, sorry, I didn't see you, Laura. Ms. Alderson, a question for the applicant, for the neighbor?
Uh, question for Mister Worster, is he still?
Yeah.
He's still on the line?
Yep.
I've seen some photographs in, in the application, I believe they were sent by the neighbor uh, of the foundation which looks uh, very cracked and uh, and deteriorating. And I'm just wondering if it can take an addition and whether you've had a structural engineer look at this property or not.
Um, I've actually been persistent with the city to review this foundation and I brought it up with the builders who were working in the basement. They didn't believe that a second story was going to be built on the house. They thought the house was being torn down and rebuilt. They were kind of surprised um, when they saw the condition of the foundation wall on my side. And the engineer had them strip the parging off the wall to see the condition of the wall. And there's a lot of it that came with the parging and the concrete is um, it's not really concrete anymore. It's just a little bit of stone and sand that uh, anytime if you touch it, it falls apart. Um, and the, the block wall that's on the rear of the house, it was an addition done many years ago, um, it's actually falling apart and at the unsafe order is because the back of the house is currently falling off of the block. The sill for the bottom of the wall or the plate or whatever you would call it is no longer sitting on the block. So there, the city was by there yesterday um, with the builders and they're late to start, but they're gonna start shoring up the house. Um, but basically my concern and the reason it was thrown out back in twenty eighteen was because, twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, the owner stated that more than fifty percent of the current house would have to be tore down to build what they would like to build. And uh, if you've looked at the structure of this house, I, I work in construction, I don't honestly built, believe that you could create a new house that's gonna list, live for another hundred years using the current house that's on the ground floor. It is in, it is in terrible condition. And, and we've had many, we've had many contractors come by our house, um, you know, we're looking to put a new roof on, doing a little brickwork. And anyone who's ever come by our house asks us when this house is going to be tore down. And when we tell them to look at the picture at the, on the front fence, they're, everyone is awestruck. They cannot believe that the city would permit a second story to be put on this dilapidated bungalow.
Interesting.
It's not even a brick wall.
Okay, and.
Uh, that certainly uh, supports my concerns as well, so. I uh, I, I don't think it can support a second story. I'm not even sure it can support what it's current, what is currently there.
Okay, so anyway, let's lay here back in response from the applicant and I, you know, I think the main reason it was turned down in two thousand eighteen May was that they were looking for one point two times coverage, looking to, whereas point six, so that's reason enough. I don't know if there was the fact that whether the walls, because you're right, if a certain amount comes down, it's considered new construction. And you're saying that in this case, there's actually a uh, we see, we don't deal with building thing, but perhaps I don't see if you're saying it can't support a second story how uh, they'll have to get approval from the building department, I guess. That's a separate, this is sort of planning issues that don't really deal with those issues. But I think that's something that someone at the city should be looking at if, in the event of an approval here. Um, so anyway, let's go back to uh, Mister uh, Monteleone. Uh, can you please respond to the neighbor's concerns, including uh, perhaps that extra non-planning issue about the actual uh, condition of this pro- of this structure and um, respond to the other concerns raised by the neighbor.
Yes, thank you. Um, I guess I would like to start off by first addressing the current um, uh, order which is on the property. Um, just to clarify, uh, that order has not passed. Um, an extension was granted because the city did not issue the order within the allotted time. Revised permit drawings have been submitted and they were just received to us today during this exact hearing. And this actually rectifies the north foundation wall. What, what is gonna be proposed along the north foundation wall is that um, we are gonna be constructing a brand new reinforced concrete foundation wall on the inside of the north foundation wall. The property owners have tried to contact the neighbor at, who was just speaking here to gain access to do this, this repair on his property, but it's, it's my understanding that some type of agreement could not be worked out. So now a brand new wall is being constructed inside the property. In, in the basement.
Okay, so that really doesn't deal with the variances. That deals with the issue that has been raised about the condition, including the neighbor being in construction, so that's a good thing. Other than that, and I see other than the laneway width, which I guess, I guess the applicant has no control over, the other variances are extremely minor. We're talking seven square meters in terms of floor space index and you know, point, the four meters of uh, landscaped area. Right? So the variances themselves are, look to be rather minor.
I just want to caution the applicant that this was submitted as an addition. So if you tear down more than fifty percent of the main floor walls, you may have to come back to committee because uh, your zoning review and committee decision are for additions, not for a new dwelling.
Fifty percent of the walls are not being removed for this application. Um, the walls are mo- are mostly staying, staying intact. And I would also like to just address one of the neighbor's comments here. Um, I believe that his letter um, pertaining to a few of the bylaws which, which might have been missed, that was submitted on May the fourth. We saw that and we, and we then asked the city for an updated letter which we received on May the seventh. Uh, so that was in response to his concerns, so we're confident that the variances which are being requested today are, are current based off the city's review.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions for uh?
Just a.
Mister Monteleone?
Well, a question for the applicant on the drawings. Um, Mister Chair, you know that you were referring to a balcony. I thought there wasn't one. There isn't, there's no variance for a balcony, but there is a second floor balcony. Can you um, let us know what the size of that balcony is?
With the last application.
Yes. Um, each one of the balconies, so there's one that's going to the ground floor and one that's also going to the second floor.
Well, the second, I mean, the ground floor is a deck, but the second floor, what, what is the, what's the, what's the square meters on that?
Three point nine eight square meters.
Okay, thank you.
You're just under.
The intention is just to, just have a cup of coffee on the back.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine.
Potentially gain access, yeah.
Okay, so the, like I said, the variances here, aside from, and I guess the laneway, he has no con- no, no control over that, right? Yeah, they have a condition though. They have transportation as conditions to be put on in this one, correct? I thought I saw a condition unless it was another application. Oh, it was, eh? Okay. Yeah, okay. Yep, there is only three variances here.
Okay.
Okay, so is, was that a motion?
Sure, I can make a motion out of that. I mean, um, given the way it's presented to us and, and I'm not sure if this, but given the variances are minor, um, you know, I, I believe it meets the four tests and um, I, I would approve the um, request a motion to approve those three minor variances.
And urban forestry number one, I believe?
Um, with forestry condition number one. And yeah, and transportation's okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay, seconded for Mister Comerick's motion. Okay, a seconded by Mister Palmer, all in favor? Laura, okay, unanimous approval, thank you. Okay, unanimous approval. And do we have Mister Lou back on the line? From number sixteen?
We had Mister Lou uh, phoned in. I'm gonna unmute the line he was using before and maybe we can see um, what happened with his connection.
Okay, I think we're just about to, we were in committee, I think, right?
Hi, Mister Lou?
We're out of time on this, yeah. Well, he was looking for the deferral.
Hi, Mister Lou? Mister Lou? Mister Lou? Okay, we seem, we seem to.
Looks like he's got his girl after all.
We seem to have uh, lost him on here as well. He's, it's showing that he's online and connected, but I'm not receiving a response.
Okay, so we'll come back. We might as well go ahead and do number eighteen. Okay, number eighteen, this is a matter, just like the last one was deferred from June sixth, this one has been, oh. This one, uh, this eighteen thirty two button wood was deferred from the February thirteenth, twenty twenty hearing. Um. I'll get to the next one. Yeah, this is an application to construct a second story addition above the existing dwelling, a new second story rear platform and a new detached garage and enclosed existing front rear porch and there are um, eight variances. Uh, we have uh, some opposition. We have a planning report dated April, another one in transportation report dated August and letters of opposition and one letter of support. Urban forestry requesting conditions one and two. And um, planning is advised that they are okay with, there were some revisions done after the uh, deferral and they are now okay, so planning is okay with it. On eighteen? Uh. No, I'm doing, he says yes, this application can proceed. The applicant is worked with, has to make the changes. This is a memo, just an email, April twenty seventh, one thirty six P M, from Amina Khan to Angelica. So there is no, number eighteen. You'll be looking at the previous memo from February. You're looking at a February memo. It was heard in February and then there was a planning April that says they're okay with it. Transportation is August. Yeah, it's just an email. It's listed on the uh. Nope. So the only speaker we have registered for this is J- Jasek So- Joe Sochaki? Jasek?
Yes, I'm here.
Welcome, welcome. Okay, so there's no one else registered to speak on this. Um. So I've just summarized, it was uh, it was put off back in February and you made changes.
Uh, that's correct.
And the changes are reflected in the, in the notice, correct? So we have a letter from Six Laxes. Current dated letter from August, uh, that they have concerns that the twice the maximum permitted area of each platform. Have you seen that letter, sir? You have a letter from the neighbor, no one's here to speak, but we have Laurel
Yes.
Gredanovsky at Six Lakes, Lays, Laxes. Is that behind you or?
Uh, so that's my client's house, so yes, they're, they're across the road and roughly three homes back from actually our property.
Okay, so they're concerned with the platforms. So we'd like to hear from you on that. Uh, we have your cover letter, we have supporting materials and planning is now okay and you're aware that uh, urban forestry is can, looking for conditions one and two. And transportation has a condition two.
Correct.
Okay, and I believe we have a letter of support from the next door neighbor.
Yes.
But the people, someone behind has some issues with the, the platforms.
Across the road, yes, across the road, correct. Um, so uh, let me just pick one. Good afternoon, Mister Chairman and the committee members. Uh, again, my name is Yatsik Sohatsky. I'm the agent for the thirty two button wood. Uh, the whole idea behind the project is the family is kind of growing for my client and they would like to just do addition on top. Um, as you go to, um, through the variances, there are no revariances uh, referring to the house. The only thing we're requesting is for the house to be bigger by point two meters, which is roughly like eight inches.
Yep.
And it has to do with uh, with just the wall structures. Uh, the other variance that we're asking when it comes to, in regards to the platforms, so there's, there is an existing uh, um, there's an existing stairs in front of the house and there is a landing and the, the front platform we're asking for that is a bit has a little bit of overhang and we're only asking for that overhang which is very small. I think it's point three of a meter. Uh, the rear platform that we're asking for
Yeah.
is just a balcony, it's coming after my, uh, master bedroom. As you know, that's uh, that bylaw of, of having just a four meters square, it's a very small platform, so we're just, we're asking for nine, one meters which is less than ten, which is less than hundred square feet, so it's gonna be something that's not even ten by ten.
Yeah.
Kind of, you know?
Sure.
And it's, it's, it's gonna be coming after a master bedroom. It's just, they're gonna have a table, they're gonna have a coffee in the morning. Um, you know, no parties, no anything like this.
Okay, it looks like your neighbor next door is okay. He's very happy. This is a growing family. It's reasonable. So the only issue is that platform which you say is off a master bedroom, so it's unlikely to be used for parties. Uh, and I see it sort of fits in with, it is oversized, but a lot of people come and ask, you know, it's not like they're asking for twenty square meters.
No, and, and that was one of the, that was one of the, the kind of provisions when I was working back with the, with the planning. Uh, so the reason why we initially defer our, our submission is because the planning was kind of late coming back to us with their notices. And then it took us a while to work that back and even now, um, there is a notice that they presented to, so it's not just an email, there is a notice. But it was receiver after the time as well. So um when I, when I go down onto the supportive documents, I can see the notice from planning saying that everything's fine.
Okay, and you're okay with the transportation condition and the urban forestry condition that they're looking for?
Yes, no problem. Uh, I did speak with forestry before, so on our site plan, you can see that the tree that's owned by the city uh will be on the protection zone when it comes to the house, and we're not gonna do any foundation work or any work on the ground floor. It's a simple extension going up, so we're not going to work that tree anymore. And if anything, because we're gonna have a flat roof on top and no overhang on this side, we're actually gonna remove the overhang, which is another eighteen inches going away from the city, uh from the tree that's that's owned by the city. Uh, now, so when you look at the variances, I know it shows you there is there is eight variances, but four are, four are regarding these platforms.
Yes.
That small um extension in the back, and the four are regarding to the garage in the back. So in that that reference letter, they're also saying about parking on the streets. That's exactly the reason why we wanna build that garage in the back. In order for my client to actually park his car in the garage as opposed to being on the street. And then uh and the, so the main thing is that there is another revision that we asking um um uh for the height. And it's we, I feel we're being penalized because we wanna keep with the with the design of the house, which is a modern, modern look, and garage having a flat ceiling, a flat roof. Uh, we're being penalized that way because I could easily do that roof, you know, um sloping roof, and we would not be we would not be asking for that variance.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, let's see if committee members have any questions for you or if they're ready for a motion. Yeah, the length is point two of a meter.
I'll give it a shot. Um, I believe the um requested variances are minor. I believe the application meets the four tests, and I would therefore like to move approval subject to um forestry conditions one and two, and subject to the transportation conditions one through five as outlined in their report.
Thank you, Mr. Kamerek. I have a seconded for Mr. Kamerek's motion. Ms. Alderson, all in favor? You have unanimous approval, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, have a good day. Okay, so we do number nineteen then? Or do we have Mr. Lou back?
Hi, Mr. Lou? Mr. Lou? Mr. Lou?
Okay, let's let's do nineteen. Uh, then we have twenty as a long one, or a number of people registered. And I guess we've heard from him. We can, if we haven't been able to reach him by the end of the day, we can perhaps we've heard we had to do, there was the issue of the the motion to defer, which I was opposed to, but now I realize there's an order to comply and a stop work order, so it's not like he's doing that to his benefit, but it's to his peril. So we can maybe even have to deal, if we can't reach him, we can still perhaps make a decision, but we still have two other applications to go through. So the next application is item number nineteen, two eighty-nine Birmingham Street. And this is an application uh to create an additional dwelling unit. The apartment building will contain a total of seven dwelling units. And the variance is because there is apartment building is not a permitted use in the residential zone. Someone's got their computer on. Okay, uh, so we have um seven units. This is lawful nonconforming use. There are transportation conditions, and planning is looking to have it built substantially in accordance with uh plans dated July sixteenth twenty twenty. So we have registered as a speaker on this, uh Andrew Palumbo as the agent, and Sofia Sel- Silva of thirty-nine nineteenth Street. So two eighty-nine Birmingham Street, Mr. Palumbo, are you with us?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon and members of the committee as well.
Okay. So um we have your uh application materials, your covering letter, the plans, the survey, and everything else. And we have the planning memo on this application. Uh, you've seen that. You're okay. Planning with with, in event of approval, would like it to be tied to the be built substantially in accordance with the revised plans dated July sixteen.
Yes, that's a- along with the uh the transportation conditions as well, because there's conditions in the transportation report.
Yes. Okay, so I'm just, um, we have your covering letter, uh it's quite extensive, two and a half pages. So perhaps we can hear from the neighbor and you can respond to the concerns?
Yes, because I've
Perhaps you can also just tell us something about the streetscape. Are there other, this is considered an apartment building, which is a nonpermitted use. As a nonconforming use, it's supposed to be come closer to compliance? So the question is, by adding a base bachelor basement apartment, is it coming closer to compliance or further away from compliance? Or sort of is it neutral? I figure since it's already have six units, um, the extra units, you know, in in terms of providing affordable housing as a basement apartment, whether that's a a factor in your favor since it already exists at six units? That's basically what's
If I could, if I can speak, Mr. Chairman, I would say it's along the lines of an improvement to the existing, that what this application represents is an improvement to the existing building. So it basically, the reason a basement bachelor unit is now able to be located in the basement is because all of the units now will have in suite laundry.
Yes.
That enabled the previous storage room and laundry facility to be converted into a usable bachelor unit. And as a result of that, I guess, again, it allows to the the space to be used a little more efficiently. Um, although it may not be pertinent to this application, and if it's, it may not even be necessary to to mention this, but as far as I'm aware, my client is advised that the actual intended tenants for this building, uh because everything's being renovated right now at the site, is actually about half intended for students that will be attending the Humber College just south on Lake Shore, like about one or two minutes away. So from that standpoint, again, the whole reason we actually went for it, we agreed to a deferral so that we could obviously work with staff, work with housing staff and planning staff to improve the site as well by providing the bicycle parking requested, along with the waste enclosure that's now been provided at the rear of the site. So yeah, I would say this would represent an improvement to the existing site for sure, just and it and reflective of the efforts that that have been made to date.
Okay, so I agree, that's the uh the hurdle that you had to meet, and I guess planning agrees with you because they're just saying build substantially in accordance with the plans, but otherwise, and like you say, you're improving the suites, you're doing on in suite laundry, you're doing bicycle parking, so let's see if committee members have any questions for you. Mr. Kamerek has a question.
You you've completed the uh supporting housing, sorry, the the rental housing application, and on that application, it indicates that you're going from six suites to six suites. Um, can you explain the why why that says six and you're asking for seven?
Actually, that was something we worked, I I originally had it listed as seven suites when I was working directly with housing staff, but they actually um, I had me make that correction to be, because what we're at, there there's six total suites that are in question regardless, because that that's what the way the form reads. It reflects what the existing situation is, when that, and that would be uh two two let me pull that up, actually. Hold on one second.
That's that's my confusion, because
Good catch.
on the form, it says
What?
it existing number of dwelling units and then proposed number of dwelling
That's right, sorry, that's correct, because the existing are six and one proposed additional is seven, but that's it's not, you don't have to put that in the chart because they're asking for the existing mix. Like that's, if I remember serves me correct, because this, I dealt with this a while ago.
Okay, it's a number of existing dwelling units by bedroom.
And renovated units.
Yeah, and existing rent, yeah. Anyway, so is there another bachelor somewhere in the building other than the new one that's being put in?
No, that
No, no, it's just the way the form is.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, that's, it's a thing with the I had seven listed and I had to correct that to make it six, which I was, I again, I found it surprising, but then you reread the form, and it's a focus on just the existing units, and that's why I read as such.
Okay. Okay, just Mr. Kamerek's very careful and he catches everything, so he got that, but in any event, um, so no one has any other, any other questions? Are we ready for a motion? Uh, hold on, hold on. Oh, yeah, uh, Sophia Silva. I'm sorry, Ms. Silva.
Hi, yes, yes.
Almost forgot about you. You're at thirty-nine nineteenth Street.
Exactly, exactly. Um, I was just referring to the committee. This is my first time referring any kind of committee before, so I would like to apologize for my language, or if I have a default.
Sure.
I'm right behind their apartments right now, so they are parking lot is sitting right into of my garden. So what, I'm so surprised that they are talking about du- dwelling or like creating another tiny bachelor, which they are trying to move the laundry room, which was existed in that apartment as a laundry room, to outside of the parking lot.
Sorry?
Have a parking lot, right?
Sorry, I can't, I can't hear what you're saying, ma'am. Are you saying you're moving the laundry room? The reason they can put a bachelor in the basement is they're moving the laundry room to the party room?
Outside, uh outside of the
Outside.
Yes, there is a four story parking, uh four garage parking lot, right outside of their apartment.
Right.
And they just knocked it down all of a sudden one day in April. And we are sitting in this half broken um wall, right in front of us.
So I thought I saw in the covering letter, ma'am, in the covering letter from the agent, I thought he said that all the tenants are getting their laundry in their suite. Not that they're converting garbage, or or maybe they're converting the part of the garage to the bachelor apartment? They don't have
Boiler room?
Boiler room?
Outside the apartment, yes, outside the apartment, there's a tiny storage for a boiling room. Uh, as I heard from the constructors, that they are going to turn it into a laundry room.
I see. Uh, and you live, but you're just a, you're a neighbor. You live, you just heard that uh from someone?
All day long, from from April to till now, we are talking to them, we are trying to communicate with them. Nobody is responding whatever is going on. And I just had this um application, but other than that, you don't know what's going on in this apartment.
Hold on, I'm just trying to find where in the letter he says where they're, how they're able to do this. Could have sworn. Oh, yes, as an additional reminder, all this is in his letter that he wrote to us, ma'am. He says all units will have in suite laundry, and thus how, why the floor space in the basement is able to be freed up to accommodate the proposed basement bachelor unit, which wrote, represents the proposed redevelopment of the subject site. So perhaps we can hear from him if there's some misunderstanding. You're saying that in order to create this, they're gonna may turn the boiler room or the garage into a common
The site plan shows a mechanical room of one story attached to the building.
I see.
Perhaps the applicant can address what's the mechanical room going to be used for.
Okay, so Ms. Silva, thanks for telling us. We're gonna hear from the applicant as what you're seeing there? Because he's told us in his letter that there, there's not gonna be a a new laundry room built for everyone to go to, like a coin operated room, but they're all gonna have their laundry in their own apartment. So let's hear back. Is that your only concern?
Right after that. No, no, there are more concerns that I have, but I would like to know if this is the first one.
Well, tell us what they are and then he's gonna respond to them all after you speak.
Yes, uh, the construction started in April by the pandemic. We were, we are in this house, six people, two elderly, one kid. They start knocking down all the garages that you might see on the list. Four, four, uh, four car garages. They just knock it down in one day, all of a sudden, without even referring to us. And then knocked down our neighbor's garage altogether, banded in half. So we are waiting for them to do anything for five months altogether right now. They did nothing
Okay, so you're saying they did this five months ago and since then, then nothing has happened?
Nothing, nothing whatsoever. They just knocked down the one story room, and then it's it's shared uh wall, that they just knocked it onto our garden.
Well, perhaps the reason is is that ma'am, perhaps the reason that's happened, and I'm just guessing, we'll hear from him, this was being, this was deferred, this was came to us in March eleventh twenty twenty, our last hearing before COVID. So he got a deferral. I I have to check back to see the purpose of the deferral, for whatever it matters, he got his deferral, and then COVID hit, so everything's been shut down. He couldn't, he wouldn't be able to do construction, he wouldn't be able to um, he wouldn't be able to uh come back to committee because everything has been closed, right?
They just did it though. They just knocked it on Monday altogether.
When did they do that? You said five months ago or Monday?
Yes, in April, in April.
Oh, in April, okay. So they did it back in the spring, but since then, um, the city actually last time asked the reason it was deferred, ma'am, in April, in March, I just found the report, is that the city asked for it to be deferred so that um he could submit his information for his rental housing application, which is now what he's done. So it's not his fault that it got, he didn't ask for the deferral staff. The city staff wanted the deferral. But obviously, once he gets his approval, hopefully he'll proceed, and it won't be, you're complaining that for the last uh six months, it's been like a mess there, right? Because they just knocked it down and they didn't do anything else.
It's a hazard area.
Yes, and I appreciate that. That's not, we don't really deal with those concerns?
Every single day I have to deal with this because I'm working from home.
Okay, I understand.
Whatever they promised, never met.
So ma'am, if you have other concerns, I suggest you call the building department, you call three one one. They deal with property standards and these type of complaints. So if you continue to have problems and they don't resolve it, like I'm saying, I think the five month delay maybe had something to do with the fact that committee was closed down and with COVID, there's no, was very little construction going on, but hopefully, but I'm saying going forward, assuming he gets his approval here, and he now can proceed. If there's additional concerns with construction or debris or any other matters, you can deal, call three one one and they will help, help to try to help you. Okay, we just deal with the built form of the planning, and what's before us here is the addition of the basement apartment. And that's what we have to decide.
My, okay, my concerns are, while they are trying to get an extra room, they are trying to get extra room in the garden while we are shared in apartments. So they are making extra room but with no um garage, no parking lots. So they're gonna be using the parking lot right into in front of my garden, which is like, not even a social distance. One meter away from my house, from my garden, where I'm sitting right now.
So you're saying they're parking outside? So the parking is now outside and not in the garage?
There's no garage. They just knocked down the door, walls, so they are just sitting their cars in front, in front of my garden. So we have like one meter, I can take, touch their uh all of their cars or the construction cars as well. So we cannot really safely sit in our garden whatsoever, waiting for them to put a fence or anything safety net. Safety net would be fine. While they are doing constructions, they are not helping whatsoever. So what my suggestion or my, sorry, my concerns are, it is not safe to be in my garden for five months, and nobody is replying whatever we are asking. A fence or a coverage or a safety net, whatever they are doing in their apartments, I'm okay, I was okay with it, but right now, every single month, they're coming up something new, something tiny. When they finish up, there will be lots of students, because they are dealing, we are just in front of uh Humber College. All the tiny bachelor apartments will be like five to ten people sitting there, and they will be smoking right in front of me because it's a parking lot. They're gonna create a parking lot here. So I will be hearing noises, smoking, and then uh parking or music in the gar- um in their cars, because it will be right intro in front of my garden. One meter away from where I'm sitting, one meter. That's what I asked for the video to show you what's going on. I will take pictures of it. I will just put it as, as you said, three one one, but this is a hazardous altogether, whatever they wanted to do.
And you're at thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
So I'm, I'm sitting right next to their parking lot, right in front of their parking. We are sharing one, yes, one, one sharing uh um wall between them and us. And also I'm uh talking on behalf of forty-one and thirty-seven. These are my neighbors right in front of.
Okay, I see thirty-nine, then forty, then there's forty-one, but they're near the front, you're near the back of the property. And what about your neighbor at thirty-seven? Is thirty-seven concerned?
Of course, because they knocked down their garage.
I see.
They were knocking down the whole story. The whole garage is halfway moved because what they did, because they didn't call, they didn't tell us, they just knocked down the walls. Because what they did, because they didn't call, they didn't tell us, they just knocked down the walls, all of a sudden, one-story, uh, room with three. Uh, parking, uh, parking cars knocked down altogether in one day.
You're saying they knocked down the neighbor's garage?
Yes, half of it, so he couldn't.
How could they do, knock down the neighbor's garage? Why would they take down the neighbor's garage?
Uh, they, because they were knocking down the, um, ceiling of the garage, so they didn't do it properly, they didn't have a safety net all around. Everything comes down to us, my garden, and to our ga- uh, neighbor's garage altogether, it's banded. And we couldn't use it for, uh, three months, he waited from, um, insurance company to fix it, they asked him to fix it, nothing happened, so he's waiting for them as well. So this is my, not just mine, but thirty-seven and forty-one.
Yes.
Nineteenth Street buildings.
Yeah, and even thirty-five.
They are altogether. There will be more damages.
Okay, so let's hear back from, I wanna hear back from the applicant is the what's, what's going on there, what's, uh, what's being built, what's boiler room, uh, gar- You say a laundry room is being built and they're, they're saying, no, it's just a bachelor apartment and that they're, everyone has their laundry in the house, in the house. I also wanna hear about what happened with taking down these garages and the neighbor's garage, so let's hear from, back from the applicant.
With your. Okay, Mr. Chairman, yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, so I'll, I'll start with, um, the, the mechanical room that is still being shown on the plans, um. The, the basement bachelor units that is now, in exist, that is now being proposed, it can be put there because some of the mechanical, I guess the mechanical room is being relocated to that. Extra storage room that is on the ground floor, uh, at the rear of the building. Uh, like I said, if you look at the plans, all the, all of the units show in-suite laundry, so I'm not sure, I, I really am not sure where a lot of this is coming from, because I actually haven't been to the site and.
So nothing's being built at the back, you're not building a boiler room, you're not building this room, this room already exists?
It already exist, it already existed, and it's now gonna continue to be used as a mechanical room, and it, it's gonna supplement what was being done in the basement, now will be done on the ground floor.
Okay.
I believe, as far as I'm aware, again, I haven't been to the site, but as far as I'm aware, this whole thing with the, the garage, they used to, it, I believe my client got. A demolition permit to actually remove the garage, but there are still four spaces that are being provided on-site at the rear for parking. So I think that's where all of this is coming from, and again, unfortunately, it sounds like this is property standards type issues, I'm not an expert on that, I can't really speak to that. But as you already suggested to the neighbor that, I, again, I can obviously communicate, and I, and I will communicate this to my client to try and see what can be done to address this, just given that it seems like a property management type issue, more than anything.
So, so the people are parking outside? They said this garage, it was in. Was the garage part of the building or is it, was it like an ex, something that, uh, protruded out from the building?
It was, it was like a separate, it was, it was like a garage detached from the rest of the building.
Okay, we're just looking it on Google Earth here. Um, okay, so that's, that's not something new that, but you're relocating some, uh, boiler, mechanical type equipment there?
That's correct, it's gonna be used as a mechanical room, definitely not laundry, like as the plans show, in-suite laundry is the intention for this site, that's the best part of the improvement. And, and as part of making way for a bachelor suite in the basement.
Okay, so you're not aware of the, the demolition and the fact that the neighbor's garage came down by, by mistake or something or?
Un- unfortunately, unfortunately not, Mr. Chairman, obviously I do, I do sympathize with the, with the opponent here for sure, and I will definitely have to make sure at the, at a minimum that I mention this to my client. Because obviously you wanna work with as many people as possible when you're in these approval processes.
Okay, but what's before us here is a, uh, non-conforming use and extension, uh, by doing this basement apartment, and you've. Explained how you feel this is not, uh, going in the other direction because you're improving the suites, you're adding affordable housing. So that by going from six to seven, by adding a bachelor apartment, does not, uh, offend the lawful con- conforming use requirements? That's your position?
Correct.
Okay, so let's see now if committee members have any questions for you, or if not, if someone's ready to make a motion on this application.
So, you're proposing, uh, four surface parking spots where the garage was, is your client, uh, gonna do any site improvements there, like a, uh, fence separation from the neighbors?
Um, that hasn't come up to date, but that is something that will, obviously my client would have to consider, would consider if the committee would ask for it. Because those would be, as you said, um, miss, sir, this would be four surface spaces, there's actually five spaces being shown overall, but yes, that, where those four spaces were with the garages, absolutely that would be considered.
Yeah, we don't have a parking variance here. We do have transportation memo. But.
But they have a parking deficiency, do they not?
Well, here's, this is the, the tricky part with this, is that the transportation.
Sorry, this is a variance for a use, that's it and permission.
It's just, that's not before us, all before us, lawful extension, lawful non-conforming use, that's what we have to make a decision on. If it turns out they're deficient in parking, we'll have to come back or, or whatever.
I, I thought so, we're sure of the parking, sorry.
Yeah, the report does say it's deficient, yes.
As, as Mr. Chairman just explained, absolutely it is fully understood by my client that again, further going through the building permit process, if, again, a zoning review is triggered, if there are any further issues, absolutely, we would have to come back to committee if there's still outstanding problems.
Right, and you're okay with those four stated conditions and transportation?
Yes, my client is okay with those along with the condition from planning.
Correct. Okay. Ready for a motion?
Where are the variants?
Substan- planning wants to build substantial accordance with the plans, there are no variants, it's, it's a law, it's extension of a lawful, I don't know if you've seen these before. But it's just coming to us as an extension of a lawful, non-conforming.
Legal non-conforming, yep.
Okay.
I, I've ac- I've actually come to the committee twice already to share with very.
Mister Colombo, we're in committee now and we're running out of time. Because we have forty-five minutes left in our stream and we still have two applications.
Okay, so, am I ready for a motion? And we appreciate you getting your client to look into the issues with the neighboring property and what's going on back there. Because it's really, it's not really, we don't have any parking variance, we don't have, uh, a law, it's just a lawful non-conforming use, but we appreciate looking into that for the benefit of the neighbors and good, uh, neighbor relations.
Okay, I'll, I'll move approval, um, subject to transportation conditions as outlined and, uh, subject to. The planning, uh, condition in accordance, uh, with, with the drawing submitted as of whatever that date is.
July sixteen. Thank you, Mr. Camerick, seconded for that motion. Ms. Alderson, all in favor? You have unanimous approval, sir.
Okay, so.
And, uh, neighbor, if you have any issues, he's gonna speak to them, and, uh, if you have any other issues, I recommend you call three-one-one and get the building department to come out and take a look at what's going on there.
Okay, so members, I'm going to ask for your indulgence, we have to go to item twenty, there are a few people to speak.
Yes.
And we really have to limit it to five minutes, including questions, because our stream ends exactly at five.
I'm gonna suggest that, um. Anyway, we'll have to cut it down, maybe, uh, other than.
We've, we've determined that there's one speaker for sixteen Hearn Hill.
Yes.
The last speaker for fourteen Hearn Hill is not speaking because there's a family emergency.
Okay, I was.
So they will be represented by nineteen Hearn Hill, so we have.
I'm gonna give nineteen five minutes, and I'm gonna give five, five minutes, and I'm gonna give twenty-two and a half minutes. I was gonna say both adjacent neighbors and then everyone else, we have some hearings where there's, you know, twelve people. And if we allow everyone to have five minutes and everyone goes god, five ends up going six. Uh, by the time we stop them, it just takes way too long and our stream is ending, so it's not like we're, uh. It's, there are other considerations, so, okay, so item number twenty, Mr. Romano is the agent, uh, on this one. Uh, if I can just give a brief, brief information, this is, uh, another detached dwelling with an attached garage, was deferred from the August thirteenth hearing. And we have, uh, planning, um, looking to have as a condition, uh, having it built substantially in accordance with the, uh, plan. Uh, dated April the sixth, and we have seven letters of opposition. And we have registered speakers, we've just gone through, so Mr. Romano, you're up, can you briefly, uh, walk us through your application, tell us why it's worthy of support?
Yes, thank you, uh, thank you, staff, for bringing up slide one, so this is a markup of the site plan drawing. And what you're gonna see is that there's a heritage tree in the backyard, and the, the building is being sited towards the front of the lot, and one of the reasons why there is a front yard setback. Variance is, um, is to stay away from that tree. So forestry has raised, uh, uh, an item of, uh, of objection, but this eleven to twelve-meter distance is more than the tree protection zone required for that tree.
So they were looking for two, three, and five, you're saying they no longer would be doing that because of this, or?
Well, I.
Still looking for two, three?
I'm, I'm saying that two and three apply, five does not apply, because the, the tree is not being impacted, to the extent that they're saying, and the, and the FSI variance. Is for seven square meters, so that does not impact the tree.
Right.
So we can zoom in towards the front of this, uh, frontal of the site plan, what you're going to see is that the. Uh, front yard setback does vary from six-point-seven-eight meters, seven-point-zero-two meters, seven-point, uh. Five-six meters, so the six-point-seven-eight on the right-hand side of the building is only for the second-story portion, because it is a, is a flat-roof building, so there's a composition of elements. So that you'll see that the street, though, is much farther away than that, like the bou- this is a very large boulevard, and the property and, and Hearn Hill. Moves away from the str- from, from the pro- well, the property, the road moves away from the property. So the distance to the street is actually larger for the subject site than it is for the neighboring buildings to the left. On the right, it's a little different, so what you'll see today is that number sixteen, which is the building to the right of the subject site. Is much deeper and larger than the building on the subject site is today. What's proposed is a building that's going to be not as big of a difference, and certainly not much larger than what's found at number sixteen next door. What you'll see on the second slide is that Hearn Hill and the surrounding neighborhood, and I don't see the slide coming up on my screen, hopefully you can see it. Is made up of a, of a mixture of housing, new and older housing, and some of the newer housing has what we see with new construction today, which is. Roofs that are more complicated, and certainly roofs that have quite a bit of mass even above the second-story level. So that upper left-hand, um, building, number twenty-nine Hearn Hill, that would be a flat roof under today's bylaw, so it would be subject to the same provisions that. That are being, uh, sought to be varied today. That isn't the case for the subject site, because the subject site has two levels, and then there is no roof above, because the roof ends at the second-story level. So the variance that's being sought, nine-point-one-eight meters, is only for the atrium, and the atrium allows light to come in, and that helps with some of the shadow that you get from the tree. And also light, and it's over top of the staircase, so there are comments regarding how it's a third floor, it's not a third floor. And this is one of the reasons why staff have recommended tying it to the roof plan, because it would just apply to that portion. You're not even gonna see it from the front street, and you'll see on the lower right-hand side, there's a perspective drawing that's done as, uh, as best as possible to scale. You'll see that the building overall is not really as tall as one of the neighboring buildings to the left, and just a little bit taller than the building to the right, different roof, yes. Side yard setback that's being proposed is only for the garage, zero-point-nine-one meters, and behind the garage, it's one-point-seven-seven meters. And on the right-hand side, next to number sixteen, the, the side yard setback is compliant, it's one-point-two-two meters and, uh, and larger. So what you'll see on the next slide is that I, I provided this information to urban forestry, it's a similar slide to what you've seen before, but the seven-point-three-one square meters doesn't, uh, affect. The tree, and then at slide four, you're gonna see some of the community outreach that I had undertaken to do, and I'm pleased to report that some of the people that are behind the subject site that has some concerns regarding the tree were satisfied with the explanation. And some of the community meeting information that was supplied, and then in slide number five, I have an, a description of response. Every single item that I, that I saw in the, in the communications that were provided for the March meeting. So subject to any questions, I would rec- I would say that staff's recommendation should be supported, although I would say, I would tie it to all the elevations, because. I'm not really sure, and I couldn't get clarification from them, what they meant by the south-side elevation, I think they meant the front south elevation.
Oh, okay.
Because the front shows the, what, the garage at zero-point-nine, and then it's, it's larger above that and then behind, and it shows, and it shows where the atrium is, so. I think that's more clear than the side, but I'm happy to tie it to all the elevations.
Yeah, they said the roof plan and south-side elevation, but you're saying, okay, tie it to all of them. Okay, thank you, Mr. Romano, let's, uh, we're, we gotta keep, keep moving, so let's hear back from the neighbor at sixteen, we have one speaker from sixteen, he's right next door. Samuel Ans- Anselm? Samuel?
Yes, hi.
Or Stephanie?
Yes, yes, can, it's, it's Samuel, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna have a statement prepared, I definitely will, five minutes.
Um, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, my name is Samuel Anselm, owner and resident of sixteen Hearn Hill. Which lies next door to the east of the proposed dwelling. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the committee for its time and effort in reviewing this application. I would also like to state that I fully support the construction of a new dwelling in eighteen Hearn Hill to improve the overall look and feel of the neighborhood. While also creating an opportunity for increased tax revenue for the city. As a degreed engineer with over twenty years of experience, with a specialized focus on construction within an industry that is federally regulated. I have reviewed the application drawings and fully support the submitted neighboring complaints associated to front yard setback, side yard setback, front yard stairs. Height, massing, safety, drainage, fire, privacy, and safety of the heritage tree with the neighboring properties. My statement will focus on two items, the first is on the potential safety hazard created by this proposed dwelling. Specifically on the risk of severe damage to the primary anchor and transport routes of a heritage tree. That could be catastrophic if the tree were to fall in the future and destroy several homes and lives. It has been a vibrant, healthy tree over the years, however, upon purchasing the home in twenty-nineteen, the builder proactively removed two major branches. Both these branches hung forward towards the existing dwelling, providing a safe, healthy canopy and shade. The committee should note that both branches would have maintained a drip line that was significant, that would significantly encroach over the proposed dwelling. And this is evident by the established drip line as noted in the survey taken in twenty-nineteen by GTA Survey Incorporated. Subsequent to the removal of these two branches, the builder submitted application drawings on April the sixth and July the seventeenth. Which show a modified drip line, one that is off-center from the trunk of the tree. And reduced by thirty percent in comparison to the established drip line of the twenty-nineteen survey. Coincidentally, the altered drip line, as shown on the application drawings, no longer encroaches with the proposed dwelling. I request that the committee look further into how an established drip line of such an historic tree. One that is far older than Canada itself can somehow change so dramatically over a few months? Is this possible by simply removing two major branches? Does the root system suddenly shift several feet? The second item I would like to address with the committee today is that the variance for the front yard setback is denied. The consideration for this request is being put forward for the following reasons. While the objective of the zoning bylaw is to create a relationship of patterns of development that respect a congruent setback between dwellings. Our home at sixteen Hearn Hill is at a distinct disadvantage due to the tangential setting of our dwelling relative to the street. This creates an anomalous situation which the bylaw would not be able to address. As such, we are faced with a significant change to the sightlines of our street. The proposed new construction would sit nearly fifteen feet in front of our neighboring edge, obliterating our view. We are remiss to see that the design of this home applied no sensitivity to our neighboring front yard setback. We are deeply concerned about the effect it will have on our enjoyment of our property, as well as our ability as parents to supervise our children under the age of ten. Riding their bikes and going back and forth safely to neighboring friends. We respectfully ask the committee to apply the sensitivity to our situation and deny the front yard setback variance. I would also ask the committee to consider the safety, risk, and liability of a fallen tree, particularly one of this size. By conducting due diligence in consideration of this application. Once again, I thank the committee for your time and consideration.
Okay, so is forestry aware of, uh, this trimming of this tree and the issues of the drip line and? We're gonna hear back from Mr. Romano, but I just don't know, have you followed up with anything, was urban forestry contacted at all or no? Because we've heard from Mr. Romano that, uh, they've sort of resolved their differences and it's subject to, to, um. Conditions two and three, forestry conditions. So we'll hear back, in any event, we have to, we're sort of. So we'll hear back. In any event, we have to, we're sort of running out of time. So does anyone have any questions for Mr. Anslem before we move on? To the next speaker. Next speaker would be William Adair, I'm sorry, William Adair at nineteen Hearn. Mr. Adair?
No, this is Jana Adair, but I just have a point of order. Tracy Karins, who is not, she had to leave the, the um, meeting due to a death in her family. Um, Paul, I've been emailing with Paul. I am to be granted her time and my time. So I think there was a mistake when you were interviewing.
Well, I don't think that's the way it's gonna work, especially we're running out of time. You'll have five minutes, supposed to two and a half to speak. To speak on behalf of both of you. Because we're running out of time and we're gonna have to get kicked out of, out of uh, uh, out of um.
I've been online since twelve thirty, listening to everything to say mine, and I'm sorry that there was a death in her family. Hers is very short.
Anyway, just go on your way, you're spending more time. Just speak, tell us what you're took, talking from your perspective and from the other perspective. Sorry?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Committee. My name is Jana Adair. My husband and I live at nineteen Hearn Hill. We strongly object to all five requested variances. Due to the limited time allowed today, I will speak to three of them. The first variance we object to is number one, the maximum permitted gross floor area. We believe that the approval of this variance will result in injuring the white oak heritage tree measuring one hundred forty-five centimeters in diameter. Referring to the memorandum dated July first, Max Dida Supervisor Tree Protection and Plan Review states, Urban Forestry recommends that the Committee of Adjustment Panel deny variance number one. It goes on to say, all bylaw protected trees located on site and within six mi- meters of the site must be protected in accordance with the city's tree protection policy for construction near trees. No excavation, grade changes, cutting of tree roots, extensive pruning of the tree's canopy, movement or storage of equipment, construction material, or excavated soil is permitted within the minimum tree protection zone unless prior authorization has been obtained from Urban Forestry. When the tree was pruned in twenty nineteen, were any bylaws contravened at that time? Do you have the paperwork to substantiate the legality of this? It is our understanding that the root system is critical to the tree's health and life. The root system can extend to two to three times the width of the canopy or the drip line. The hoarding to protect this heritage tree must adhere to the bylaw requirements regarding a tree of heritage status. Who would be responsible overseeing that at no time the root system would be compromised? We have serious concerns regarding the white oak heritage tree's protection plans that would ensure no injury to the tree and to the root system. Was a protection plan made in consultation with a qualified arborist or with urban Ontario Urban Forestry or City Forestry? We object to various number, variance number one, as we believe it would injure or perhaps kill this heritage tree. Our neighborhood is filled with mature trees. That is why we live here. Any possible threat to the canopy of this neighborhood exhibits an insensitivity to the residents of our neighborhood and to the integrity of our community. We object to a request for variances number two, minimum required front yard setback and variance number four, maximum permitted height for a flat roof. The proposed building is located closer to the street than the adjacent houses when taking into account the zoning bylaws that respect a congruent setback between buildings. This interferes with the aesthetic appeal of orderly planning on Hearn Hill and interferes with the sightlines on the street. The proposed flat roof of nine point one eight meters is two point six eight meters or eight feet nine inches higher than currently allowed. Is unnecessary, unsightly, and not in keeping with the tradition of the houses on Hearn Hill. To quote you today, Mr. Clark, the proposed new home would be an outlier on Hearn Hill. It is clear that plans for this new building are incongruent with and violate the city bylaws. The applicant for this building has shown insensitivity to the integrity of our neighborhood. We call upon the city to do as right for the taxpayers on Hearn Hill by denying the variances as they are now.
Thank you, Mrs. Adair. Just under five minutes.
This is for Tracy Hearn. It's very short. It's one minute. I do believe she has the right to voice her opinion. Tracy would like me to mention to you that the fifteen-foot bulge out is not acceptable to either house adjacent to eighteen Hearn Hill. It is far too much and creates blocked sightlines for them both. I am not comfortable with this. Can't there be a compromise? And to stay happy on our street, give us another option, please. Further, an approval of a fifteen-foot property bulge out sets an unsightly precedent for all future builds on Hearn Hill. This is not good. We have been paying property taxes on Hearn Hill far longer than the new homeowners have.
Okay, that's, that's irrelevant. I don't wanna hear about taxes. Okay. Are you talking about the, the jut out at the back? Ma'am, are you talking about the back or the front jut out? The front? Okay.
She's talking about the front.
Thank you. Okay, so let's um, and you were talking about the roof, I guess it's not, you do understand it's only a, Mr. Romano will go, it's only the spot at the, at the top. It's not the whole roof at nine point whatever.
I understand that. I still believe that it is still eight feet nine inches beyond and it, it's
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, so we have left um, Susan with Nikki uh, at twenty Hearn Hill. If you could please uh, do it in two and a half minutes.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, we're just um, staff are contacting her. She was present at the hearing but has since disconnected.
Well, we have twenty minutes left on our YouTube time, so um, perhaps Mr. Romano can respond and if we, she comes back. We've heard, certainly heard from a lot of directly affected neighbors, the neighbors at sixteen and fourteen on either side. Uh, sorry, uh, sixteen, she's the one at twenty, so she is on the other side, but if we can't find her, we can't find her, so.
Yeah, I'm, we, we can certainly go to Mr. Romano and then I'll.
Okay. Mr. Romano, can you uh, please respond to the concerns being raised by the neighbors?
Yes, I'd like to go back to my slide one, please, if staff can help with that. And I go towards the front. I wanna zero in on the fronts, please. Presentation supporting material, I think it's called.
We say you're as built, building envelope.
Yes, the bill, the bill, as I wanna zoom in on the front, please, if we can zoom in on the front, but I just wanna, while that's being uh, done, hopefully the, I can convey to the committee that the, the proposed law coverage, from a law coverage perspective, how much of this law can be covered? Is twenty-three percent. And that is ten percent less than what the zoning bylaw allows as of right. We will see in terms of the building length measurements, that the proposed building is well within the building length from front to back. The second floor is only twelve point two meters long next to number sixteen to the, to the right. That front yard setback is a difference of twenty-four centimeters. It's not a difference of fifteen feet. It's not a difference of any other number than any other person has conveyed other than what I've conveyed. It is a twenty-four centimeter difference and it all, is only for part of the front wall. The majority of the front wall, even at the ground floor level, is well in excess of the minimum front yard setback. Now, if we look at the, at the neighboring building, if you look at the property map that I have there, you're gonna see that Hearn Hill is not a straight street. It is a curvilinear street. Mr. Anselm's property by comparison, um, at sixteen Hearn Hill is actually four meters or lar- or larger in front of the neighboring building to his right. So that is a condition that is consistent with what the streetscape is like. This is not a street where everybody is lined up like soldiers with, with their front balls. And I believe that what the proposal is seeking to do is deal with some of the site constraints and also be sympathetic to neighboring properties. So it's away from the tree. I've already talked about how the eleven to twelve meters is farther than the eight point four meter tree protection zone. There is no limb that has to come down. There is no drip line that's being in fact impacted. In fact, if you look at the, at the site plan and you look at the air photographs, this tree canopy is not central to the, where the, where the uh, like this tree canopy is off on a, on an angle to where the trunk is. It's not centered on the trunk.
Mr. Romano, I think what they were just, if I can just interject, cause I know they're not allowed to. I think what they were saying is when the gentleman purchased a property, he took down the two limbs. Not that he's gonna do it now. I believe that's what they say. That he legally took down two, two limbs off the tree and made it. That's what I recall. Does anyone?
Inference was that the, that the drip line has been changed prior to the application.
Yeah. There's some issue going on with the drip line. That's not cor- not correct. I guess they can, they, both they and you can follow up in event of an approval with Urban Forestry. It's not the end of the, you know. Uh, you still have to deal with Urban Forestry and perhaps they can do that as well and perhaps I'd appreciate if, you know, just to make sure that they understand that there wasn't anything uh, going on, that somehow someone played around with the drip line in order to fool someone or the, that's the implication I got, that there was something going on there.
There's, there's nothing untoward, but just, but the, if you look at the survey, the survey shows a drip line basically centered in all the circle, you draw a circle around where the, where the uh, the tree trunk is. On the site plan, the site plan shows a more accurate drip line. Cause the drip line, if you look at any air photograph.
That's what I just got the impression that that was their concern, that because of, that somehow someone manipulated where the drip line is shown or something.
Yeah, but that is in part what that communication is. So I just wanted to be clear on that. If you actually look at any, any air photograph, Google Cities Air Photography, you'll see that the drip line is skewed a little bit. That's what's shown in the, in the site plan. Uh, so in terms of the height, I think I've already discussed the height and we'll see that sure, architecturally, I mean, the, the building is a little different than, than some of the architecture of the uh, of other buildings on the street and in the, in the area, because it has the, the flat roof, but it is also a composition of elements. Some of those other photographs that I show of other new construction is also, they also have different composition of elements. And some of them, like I've said, and you see in the photographs, they have a flat roof condition that would qualify as a fat, flat roof. And they are taller because the roof is above the second floor as compared to this being at the second floor.
Right, and you're basically saying this is just an atrium. It's not the height across the whole lot and it's, the way it's set back, you said you basically can't even see it from the street. I think that's what you said?
Correct, so we're nine meters away from the front.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not a third floor.
It's all shaped. It's not a third floor, yeah. And the rest of the flat roof or over the second floor is re- is a reasonable roof line that you would achieve even with a, with a slope roof, except that the slope roof would have you just going out.
What is, Mr. Romano, what is the height of the propos- what is the proposed height of the second floor roof?
Eight point one one?
Second, second floor roof is eight point. Eight point one one, eight point six. It's about seven point, seven point five to seven point eight.
So that, that exceeds the, the, the maximum per- permitted as per bu- as of right as well?
So Mr. Chair, the, uh, the neighbor at twenty Hearn Hill is back on. And we real, Mr. Romano's reached his five minutes.
Okay, so Mr. Romano, let's hear from the neighbor. He'll give you another short period if there's some need to respond to what uh, the neighbor at uh, twenty has to say. Mrs. Wiznicki, you there?
Great, yes, I am.
Hi, welcome. Let us know what your concerns are. I guess you're right next door here.
Okay, thanks. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am Susan Wiznicki, the owner of twenty Hearn Hill. And I live next door on the west side of eighteen Hill. I believe you have received my written submissions with respect to my concerns a few weeks ago. And I would like to briefly go over them now. The proposed plan of this house will be too close to my property line on the east side. At present, I have a serious problem of flooding in my basement when there, when there are downpour. Once the proposed home is built much closer to my lot line, I'm concerned I will get more flooding. Furthermore, the owner's plans of the house does not include east tops. How will drainage be maintained so it doesn't affect my property? I am worried that the new home built so close to my property line will potentially increase water flowing into my basement. Another concern I have with the house is the extension and how far it goes out. The proposed house will extend too far out compared to the other homes on my street. It will be jutting out and dwarf neighboring properties. It will decrease privacy for neighbors, obstruct sightline, and definitely change the layout of the neighborhood. I believe this is very unfair to both neighbors on either side of the property. I would also like to raise an issue on the height of the proposed house. The height is taller than the existing homes on the street. The proposed height impacts neighbors on either side of the proposed house. It seems to me that it is well beyond the allowable height and is a deviation from the rest of the homes on Hearn Hill. The height of the house is too large for the size of the lot. It will impact my backyard. It will block sunlight into my yard and tower over my house and impact my privacy rights. Also, I would like to address uh, my concerns about the very old oak tree that is in the backyard of eighteen Hearn Hill. This historical old oak tree has been deemed a heritage tree due to its age. It is the largest tree in the neighborhood. I believe that the proposed house is too far back and should be fifteen feet clear of the drip and tree's drip line. I would also like to know if the arborist report is being made public. I would like a copy of it. I am concerned that all of the digging and building will weaken the root system and could potentially cause damage to property or people if tree limbs fall. In conclusion, I hope you will take my concerns seriously regarding the issues that I have raised today. And that plans for the house on eighteen Hearn Hill are modified. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wiznicki. Uh, Mr. Romano, would you like to respond to Ms. Wiznicki's concerns? And then we'll take it into committee for a decision.
Certainly, uh, this, this uh, was Nikki's concerns regarding the uh, building itself. The zero point nine one meters is only for the garage, beyond the garage, above the garage, and behind the garage. It's one point seven seven meters. So that is in excess of the one point two meters that is required as a minimum. And that helps mitigate not only the height variance, which is to the atrium, but also the eight point one one meters of the top of the parapet and any privacy or overlooked concerns, because a house can be constructed with the windows, fenestration closer to the side lot line and deeper into the lot than what's being proposed. She, her property is also to, on the left-hand side and she has full sun exposure. There is no sunlight, the sun shadow that comes from this building, whether it's a shed or an apartment building on this lot that goes on to her property. And so there wasn't, wouldn't be any, any sunlight issue. And in terms of drainage, again, side yard setback is larger than what is permitted, uh, required under the bylaw. There's more space on the lot than what the bylaw would allow as of right. So there's plenty of space to have drainage on the site. And it would be subject to approval by the building department, uh, building permit in any event. And I've already discussed the tree. I think there's a lot of misinformation being raised out there about the, the tree and the site. And I was trying to convey that with my site plan that I had shown at the community meeting and in this package, that the, the tree is way far away from where this house is. And that the front yard setback has nothing to do with the tree. Neither does the height, neither does the side yard setbacks, neither does the seven square meter gross floor area request.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Romano.
The, my only just question, so you're deficient on her side. She was talking about the side yard setback, three meters of this four meter. She was talking about the side yard setback, three meters versus four meters. Does she have four meters on her side? So there'll be seven meters between the properties?
She, she has.
Is you are asking for a one meter variance there, correct? Is that correct?
Zero point nine meters up against the garage and then she has at least one point three meters or at that, at that position.
Uh huh.
It would be two point, two point two, two point three meters between walls from the garage, one-story garage to her dwelling.
Okay, and that's where you had the one-story garage portion. Okay, so committee members, any follow-up questions for any of the neighbors or for Mr. Romano? Or are we ready for a motion?
Just, just a quick, I, I think Mr. Romano had answered my question, but I just wanted to confirm the height of the second floor roof is seven point five meters, is that correct? Seven point five to seven point eight meters.
And eight eleven to the parapet?
Eight eleven to the top of the parapet.
Yeah.
So why is nine eighteen being requested?
That's for the top of the atrium, for just a little small portion in the center.
And what? That's why, that's why you tie it to the elevation. Understood, understood. Um, did your client do a arborist report on that tree? Yeah, arborist report submitted with the, with the city and that there is an injury and an injury request for that. No, no, I understood. I just didn't see the report, so, okay.
Members, we have nine minutes and we still have two files to deal with, plus the closed ones.
We just have Mr. Liu, don't we? Yeah, and the closed file and his weekend jury. Okay, so we've got to move. If someone's making a motion, now's the time to do it. Injury tree does, that's the front yard tree, not the heritage tree. So we don't have a copy of the arborist, you're saying that the heritage tree at the rear of eighteen was, is going to be protected? It's the front yard tree that's being injured?
Correct, hundred percent.
Okay, having heard from everyone, including the neighbors and the applicant, it's a tough application, but I'm going to move for approval. Variance is requested being minor and meeting four tests in the Planning Act. And that will be tied to the plans as submitted. And I don't know the dates of all the plans, but generally in accordance with the plans that have been submitted. And subject to the forestry conditions two and three.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Palmer. I've seconded for Mr. Palmer's motion.
And that would be April sixth, twenty twenty. The plans were submitted April sixth, twenty twenty, okay?
Thank you.
And I second that motion, yes.
Second, all in favor. You have unanimous approval based on those conditions. Thank you, Mr. Romano. Thank you, neighbors.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Enjoy your evening.
So now we go back to number sixteen. Mr. Liu, you have Mr. Liu.
We have.
Mr. Liu, if you're still looking for that deferral, now that I know there's a stop work order and it's not being, it's not to your advantage to get the deferral and, and just sit on it, I, I don't, I withdraw my objection to a deferral request. So if someone wants to make a motion to defer this, is Mr. Liu with us, by the way?
He's, so he's still, it still appears that he's online. Paul has tried to reach him a couple of times. Um, Mr., sorry, Mr. Liu, are you with us? Mr. Liu?
Anyway, we've heard from him already. We can make our decision, especially if it's the issue of his requested deferral request, if that's going to be how we're going to go. I don't think we even need him at this point because he's already made those submissions. Now that I know that no one else opined, but I opined that it wasn't appropriate if he had already been built and been using it, but given there's a stop work order and it's partially constructed, then there's enough impetus to.
Motion to defer item sixteen A and B.
To defer for.
To obtain a revised zoning review?
Correct.
Correct, and to clarify what the actual issues are.
Thank you. Seconded for that. Laura Alderson, all in favor. Matter is deferred. Closed file, item number one, or not item number one.
So, one, eleven forty-four Davenport Road, the applicant has requested that it be closed.
Motion to close and no return of fee. Motion to close the file. Merrick, seconded by Ms. Alderson, all in favor. File is closed.
And three, three nine Maple Leaf Drive consent into variances. The refund will be dealt with through the refund policy, so you're just closing the files at the request of the applicant.
Okay. Again, motion. Mr. Kamerik, give Mr. Palmer a chance. All in favor. Okay, file is closed.
Thank you, members.
Okay, and we made it under the YouTube deadline.
We have five minutes to spare. Good night, everyone.